Someone the recording?
No, it's my, it's this.
As many people show up as possible and keep an eye and ear on everything.
Register to speak.
Who that is? See color.
All right. Absolutely. Thank you so much. You're welcome.
Hello.
Hi.
There's an agenda if you'd like one.
Either.
And if you want to be on citizens comments right at the podium, you can sign up for it if you'd like.
A lot to say, but I don't know that. I don't know if I'm speaking to that person.
Mr. Jennings may be a few minutes late joining us for the work session this evening.
Remember if he was Moto G. It might be him. I don't know.
You mean a government meeting is not going to start on time? Shocked and dismayed.
I apologize.
I work for the federal government. So I'm very sarcastic.
No worries, no worries.
Time is now five thirty. We'll go ahead and give our other board members a few more minutes to get in before we kick off our work session for this evening.
Me. Who would spot right? Hello. How are you? How's your ride? Good, yeah. Went to get past like Springs. Yeah, it's pretty easy.
Information.
Hey, Daddy.
Oh.
Kind of an overview and then there's the easement comments, the copies of them. So you kind of know what they look like and then. I'm okay with the original signature.
Those of you just joining us, we'll give our remaining board members a few more minutes to file in here before we kick off our work session.
Well, yeah. It's been late in the city. Good evening.
Good, how are you?
All right, thank you. You're listening.
Yeah. Oh, my God.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Natural gas.
Mr. Moore. The back of this January of this year?
It is like.
I just want to know about.
When I looked on the screen, it's beyond the same page.
Still does some.
It is extra information.
That is January twenty fourth. Thank you. I'm.
Hey, the time is now five thirty-five P M. We'll go ahead and call this February seventh, twenty twenty-three work session of Rosenberg City Council to order. Ms. Park, could you please give us a roll call?
Mr. Martinez?
Here.
Javiho?
Here.
Paves?
Here.
Is Laura?
Here.
Is Ryan?
Here.
Jennings? Mr. Jennings?
I think he's coming in. I seen his truck out there.
Ms. Daniels? We have Cora matter four.
Yeah. We'll be able to make it forward. Well, thank you all for joining us this evening. The topic of our work session was a discussion regarding the lifting of the water restrictions that we had to apply back late in the summer due to the problem that we were experiencing at the time with our raw water line and our inability to effectively fill a city reservoir. Since that time, Cruz has been able to identify some of those areas that. Where we had some more long-term leaks and since then, thankfully, the levels have been on the rise. Around the first of the month, we had reached full capacity and we're still lying just a hair above that. Y'all may remember that was the threshold that our water engineer, Matt Welsh, had suggested of where we could look at lifting those watering restrictions without running into any trouble. On the agenda this evening. We did have to change the method in which we terminate this water restriction by resolution rather than by simple motion. So if council hasn't had a chance to review that yet, that'll come in the form of a resolution twenty twenty-three, part three. That just abides by our ordinance that pertains to. The formal termination of those watering restrictions.
We get a copy of that? There's some down there.
Yeah, and that was something I was really caught at the last minute and I'd like to thank our new attorney, Ms. Vera, for the quick turnaround and resolving that issue that could have very easily held us up this evening. Does council have any questions or comments regarding lifting of water restrictions before we move on to any other topics of the pleasure, Ms. Mace?
Not at this time.
Mr. Martinez?
When you, you said, I believe you said we're at full capacity. Does that mean? The pipes are running at full capacity or the reservoir is full?
The reservoir, so full capacity for city reservoir is four hundred and eleven acre feet and we're currently, I believe, around four sixteen. So. It definitely in a good place to be compared to. Hell, we're down to. He wondered. At one time. Sorry, did you have anything?
I haven't had the chance to read this yet.
Mr. Jennings, we were just discussing the lifting of the watering restrictions given the fact that a city reservoir is now at full capacity. Just seeking any questions or comments that council might have related to that before we move on to.
I have nothing.
Thank you, sir.
We'll be at full capacity. I'd like to see us lift them. As long as we can. Keep the levels right in the lakes. And not overflow them.
Yes, sir.
So I do actually, so last year at the same time, we were in the same boat. I mean, we were at full capacity. And so I just want to make sure that we don't go down the same road we did last year. If we see it following that we address it much earlier, have in the past.
So if you, if I might, for those of you based upon our water reservoir reports, the city reservoir is at capacity. We do have a little overflow coming out of it. Which is going into the cooler, which then feeds directly to horseshoe. So we're still capturing that water storage capability in horseshoe and Martin Lake. So we're still have that water available, which I think is the critical thing that we need to keep in the back of our minds. We know we've had a rather dry winter. According to N R C S, we're like at seventy-seven percent snowpack. This is the middle of February for all intensive purposes. Administratively, we would, we would concur with lifting water restrictions, but know that if we continue down this path. Of extremely dry remaining winter and into the spring. That we could easily be looking at a dry river with no resource, but what we have in storage. So. There's certainly the opportunity later this summer. Hopefully, that's not going to be the case, but we need to start some moisture somewhere. And ideally a snowpack. Hopefully get us through at least part of June. Currently, we don't have that. Oh, that's, that's the only comment I have. I wouldn't disagree on lifting. Know that there. Be an opportunity to have to revisit.
One thing. As far as goes to our ability to monitor that, I see in our agenda, we have some quotes for telemetry equipment for our upper reservoirs, which will be very handy and. Quite a bit more efficient than how send crews up there daily. For that, so hopefully we can address that problem that Ms. May raised. Is there anything else that council would like to discuss tonight? I thought this would be a good opportunity, especially if there's agenda topics that council feels might require some additional discussion. We could, for efficiency sake, get that taken care of during our work session here. And I really think this is important now more than ever. Well, Mr. Hyatt had a considerable distance to travel. Ms. Vera has the stretch more than that and. As a courtesy to our new attorney, I'd like to keep the meetings as efficient and on point as possible. So. We're not having her back on the road at ten thirty or eleven at night like Mr. Hyatt often was. Ms. Laura?
Yes, back to the. Water. How is Dagger Lake looking? Because part of the issue is that we need to have enough water in Dagger to bring down two. And it has been very low. So what's the situation with that?
So we continue to fill Dagger from Wahitoya. It's called the blow-off is running substantially. We are seeing an increase in that. Problem that we have with Daggers, we were trying to exclude pulling from that. But we have a currently a problem with a valve on Wahitoya and the cast line. So as I alluded to in my report. There are some. Potential commitments. To availability of my preference at this point would be to shut the lines down completely because of the. Current level of city reservoir and the fact that our treatment plant isn't using, isn't drawing the level that they normally draw because it is winter. And utilize the opportunity to run some lines and really check things. However, there's some commitments to availability of water, which forces us to keep water in those lines, which. It poses some problems. So currently we're having to pull water out of Dagger on a limited basis to maintain the cast iron line. Commitment that we have further down the line. So even with that, we are seeing some increases in Dagger based upon the amount of water that we are pulling from Wahitoya into Dagger.
So how high is Dagger today?
That fourteen and a half.
And horseshoes at eighteen, city lake at eighteen point five.
Mr. Jennings, do you have anything else to say? I actually have something on Ms. Vera's. Enclosures. What is going on with the cease and desist issue? Or away Russell.
So just today we responded to Fergentiles attorney's letter about the cease. Just affirming our. Cease and desist is appropriate based on some modifications that they've made to that space without having an inspection performed and. Without obtaining a certificate of occupancy is required under the code.
You know, it kind of seems to me that we're putting a lot of roadblocks in front of some of these businesses. That's when you give us a kind of a bad name on rather than helping them out to open them up. And you know, to me, it seems like we're obstacle after obstacle in front of these. Businesses. To, you know, try and get. You know, more people in, more visitors. I mean, we should see what we can do to kind of help them out without trying to, you know, get them to shut their doors.
Sure. So if I might, Mr. Jennings, I think. I'll respond for Ms. Vera since I have a little bit more background than she was kind of thrown to the wolves on this one. You know, the difficult thing with this particular business was that they did pull the building permit back in February of last year. The building permit included not only the three-story structure, but also the single story. You know, in, in. From that basis, we have done inspections on the three-story part, but have never been notified of a need for inspections on the single-story part. So it's difficult to be able to issue any kind of even a T C O. Without knowing, you know, according to the plans, they were to install two bathrooms in there. We don't know what the status of that is. So you know, it's, it's not a roadblock. There's a responsibility of the city to. Because of. You can't just issue, as you know, a certificate of occupancy if, if the units don't meet code requirements. Well, we're not sure what the status of anything is because we have no inspections on it. So. You know, it's difficult to. To rescind something. And that's just part of the protocol.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is we should. Help them rather than, you know, just trying to, you know, say this is black and white. We're going to shut you down because it didn't happen. Have a conversation with them and try and move forward with it. I mean, because, you know, we need growth in this community or this community is going to die. And right now with. You know, the way city is working with the business owners, you know, it seems like we don't want growth. We're putting too many obstacles in front of them and not having no. Resolution tool.
And we have been trying to work with them and you understand it's only for the south side of the building, right? It's not for the entire building. It's just.
It doesn't say.
It's just for the.
To be being installed.
Side is, I don't believe is even occupied.
Well, that's why they haven't been issued anything because they haven't completed or done anything to the. Because they've been having craft fairs and different things and it's, there's no certificate of occupancy.
I mean, we should be.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
You know, that's all I'm saying.
Well. The difficult thing is. Being able to comprehend and understand the processes and, you know, I don't think that in any circumstance. If someone calls for an inspection, that they've been denied that opportunity. So, you know, it's a communication both ways. If there's a building permit in place, which by evidence there is. Then. You know, they've certainly had the means and have utilized that to pull inspections on the other components of the building. We're not contesting their use of that. All we're stating is that without inspections and, and an idea of what's had, what's occurred in this. Then you can't utilize and occupy the space with the public because of the liability to the city too. So.
But that's understandable. I have nothing else.
I have nothing else. Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Uh, Mr. Veal?
I think we've worked pretty hard with the mercantile to try to help them out. You know, we have rules and we have to follow them sometimes. Should follow them all the time.
Uh, Ms. Maze, did you have anything? Patient to this or anything else?
I mean, since we're going to kind of take some time to talk about some stuff on the agenda and hopefully, um, item eleven under new business, the approval for cleaning the color and Gomez. I don't know about anyone else, but I was pretty freaking shocked by that. Um, I don't, I looked in the newspaper for the last three weeks. I didn't see the post. Um, I don't know where it went out. Go out beyond where we're at. Um, I just don't see how we can afford that kind of money to clean those ditches. And if they were cleaned last year by the same individual who's bidding to clean them, I'm not sure I'd want him to clean them again.
So the section that was cleaned last year is not in this, in any of the sections that were put out to bid. Um, the only portion of the color ditch that was cleaned was from, uh, one sixty uh, back through kind of the, the Spanish Peaks subdivision on the south side that goes all the way back to the water treatment plant and, and circles back around. That was the only segment of the color that was cleaned. Uh, the segment as identified in the RFP from, uh, Highway one sixty north um, has never been cleaned. You can't hardly even walk down the ditch that goes all the way to Horseshoe. And then the segment from what's called the flume there at the Sandaroya that goes all the way back to the Kachera, which is another thirteen thousand feet, uh, has never been cleaned as well. That's the particular section of concern that in the Gomez, um, because of the condition of the ditch and the particularly with the Gomez, um, we flooded buildings, um, in that vicinity and homes in that vicinity on the Gomez. We run the risk of, uh, not being able to contain the water in the cooler from the diversion, uh, through private property. More of a property damage, not structural damage. The Gomez presents some structural concerns because of the proximity of the ditch to residents.
What about the other owners of the city of Walsenburg? It's not the primary owner of Gomez. We don't have the majority ownership in that.
No, we have a
Quarter?
One. It, it's, it's, uh, not quite one-third. It's half of one. So two-thirds of it belongs to the Welch. And then, um, one-third is divided between the city of Walsenburg and Faldutos. So Falduto picks up basically from, um, Main Street, that direction and Welch's, it's, it's a pretty long ditch. Just could take it from there.
Uh, I know, um, the previous administrator was in negotiations, I think, wound up falling flat with Falduto. And then, uh, the gentleman that had purchased, uh, the interest from the Welsh family. Have you been able to open up any additional lines of communication to see if they might be willing to contribute, uh, to cleaning that? It sort of seems with us holding a early junior right, uh, and then, uh, even from a liability standpoint, uh, it, it seems like, uh, there's others that have more skin in the game for lack, lack of better terms.
I don't deny that. Yeah, there's certainly, um, from an equitable standpoint, more, thank you. Others with more responsibility for that. But then in terms of the length of the ditch, if you kind of portioned it out accordingly. Um, my concern is because it substantially goes through the city of Walsenburg and that section from the diversion in the sand gate to the end of Main Street. I'm just trying to look out for our citizens, uh, in this community to the best of my ability. So short of that, um, we have tried to renegotiate and re-approach some of these individuals. But from a timing standpoint, I don't know that we're going to have a resolution to really address this before the irrigation season.
And speaking to that segment, I, I believe it's labeled as segment one from the diversion off the Kachara to Sander Royal. I did have a landowner actually just this morning send out some pictures of that stretch. And yeah, th- those banks are pretty much, uh, totally gone. A, a lot of silting in, uh, really, really surprising, but makes sense, uh, with all the post fire runoff and sediment that were in those stream flows, uh. In my opinion, I, I think especially given the, the concern over price, that may be one that would be worth tackling first, being that uh, we do have, hold the majority interest in that ditch. And as reflected in the bid, that's the lowest cost. But I believe at four dollars, uh, a, a foot there. And, uh, it certainly does come in close proximity to a number of those properties there. And I, I could see how in, in heavy flows, uh, we, we could really get ourselves into trouble there. But, uh, so kind of my thoughts on that, uh, the the stretch from our outfall into Horseshoe back to the treatment plant, uh, have you been able to, uh, speak with Parks and Wildlife to see if, uh, they might be interested in, um, I see, I see that as there possibly being a collaborative effort there, uh, being that we want an access along that ditch bank that could feed into a trail, possible trail plan to where they might get involved. And then the other thing too, uh, with that stretch there, it's, uh, loaded with invasive woody, woody species that while it's our ditch, woody species are on their property and by state law, they're, uh, founded to control those. So I, I think there might be an opportunity to work with Parks and Wildlife there.
I did have a conversation with Ms. Corey. Um, they don't have funding currently identified for work on that, um, but they did make available, um, the opportunity to dispose of some of the cuttings and stuff that are going to have to come off of that ditch. It looks like even to be able to start down that, that's probably the most overgrown of the segment uh, of the ditches. And you know, I don't want to say it's the least concern of mine right now. Um, only because we can get some water down it, uh, as determined by what's coming out of currently city reservoir. Um, but I think, uh, if we can perhaps postpone that segment, if not this year, at least approach them from a budgetary standpoint for next year and really open up that segment of it, um, would be partial recommendation on that. I, I think we can get by with what we have currently, not knowing that we're not utilizing it to the extent that we do the rest of color.
Uh, Mr. Martinez, did you have anything?
I don't have anything at this time. Uh, Miss Laura?
So Ms. Davis, in your report, you said that they were waiting on, uh, insurance and life insurance. Has that happened yet?
Since we aren't in a position to award anything, I haven't required that of them. I don't foresee that as any issue with this particular contractor.
But isn't that a requirement for us normally?
It, it will be if you are in a position to award a contract, at which point before we sign a contract, we'll require their, uh, documentation.
Uh, Mr. Jennings, do you have anything, sir?
Uh, I just have the concern about starting in these ditches a little late. Uh, you know, we went through this last year and seen where it got us throughout the summer because we missed our call. Uh, I believe maybe we should just look at certain areas uh, that are worst and see if we can concentrate on that. And then maybe just do uh, some type of maintenance cleanup throughout the rest of it and monitor it while we're pulling our water. Because I don't, I don't want to end up like we did last year. We started cleaning ditches right around the same time last year and we missed our call. And that's a lot of the reason why the city lake was the way it was this summer.
So the requirement for the RFP, which the contractor, this particular contractor is well aware of, requires that the color has to be done by March fifteenth, which coincides, uh, as per Mr. Welsh, a water engineer with our ability to pull. The Gomez is April. Um, so we we have the requirements in there specifically so that they understand the urgency um, of what we need and why we need it.
And if it isn't met, then.
Uh, if it's not met, then it's at, it's at their risk.
Well, they're at the city's risk. Is there really?
Risk for water, but.
Yeah. And that's what.
Actual standpoint, it's their risk as well.
So, so where did you say they cleaned last year?
So it, if you're familiar, they cleaned from the south side basically of the flume. And it goes south and intertwines back through, I, I think that's part of Spanish Peak subdivision. Uh, and then it comes, it circles, it follows a ridge line all the way around and then comes back in front of the water treatment plant. So that's the segment that was cleaned last year.
Sir Veal, before we enter, enter our regular session, did you have any comments on this? Okay, the time is now six oh one PM. We'll go ahead and call, uh, this February seventh, twenty twenty regular meeting of the Walsenburg City Council to order, uh, Ms. Bar, could you please give us a real call?
Ms. Laura?
Here.
Mr. Jennings?
Yeah.
Ms. May?
There.
Mr. Veal?
Here.
Mr. Martinez?
Here.
Dave Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Daniels? Dale? We have Corin.
Thank you. Mr. Veal, would you please lead us in the flag of the United States of America?
And in republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the principle of justice for all.
Hey, moving on to approval of this evening's agenda. Do we have a motion for?
I'll make the motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion by Mr. Veal, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, second by Mr. Jennings, is there any discussion? Uh, yes, Miss Laura?
Uh, just one question. Uh, on I line one eighty, well, two and one eighty-one. Um, it says that Laura and Daniels let the session due to conflicts. Could we change that to objection of the meeting instead of a conflict?
Are you talking about minutes? Are you talking?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, she's talking.
I'm ahead of the game, sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
My only correction, uh, that I would, uh, suggest is, uh, let me see, under new business item eight, uh, that will actually be, uh, approval of resolution twenty twenty-three R three, uh, so that we're in compliance with the, uh, water conservation ordinance and how we go about terminating, uh, uh, water restrictions. Uh, is there any other discussion, Ms. Maze? Uh, Ms. Bar, could you please call for the vote?
Mr. Veal?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Dave Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Jennings?
Yes.
Ms. Laura?
Yes.
Princess?
Uh, we don't have any contents within our consent agenda this evening, so we'll move on to approval of the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, uh, minutes of, uh, the city council. Do we have a motions?
I'll make a motion to approve January seventeenth, city council regular meeting minutes.
Motion by Mr. Veal, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, by Miss Laura, is there any discussion? Uh, Mr. Veal? Mr. Jennings?
Um.
So.
Uh, just again, sorry about that on, uh, one eighty and one eighty-one, uh, Mr. Daniels and I, and I'm not speaking for him. But instead of saying we left the session due to a conflict, could we change that word to objection? And, uh, all right, that's it for on that.
Uh, Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. May? If there's, uh, nothing further, Ms. Park, please call for the vote.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Dave Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Veal?
Here.
Ms. Laura?
Yes.
Ms. Jennings?
Yes.
Princess? Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Dave Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Veal?
Here.
Ms. Laura?
Yes.
Ms. Jennings?
Yes.
Princess?
Next up, we have approval of the January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, uh, Walsenburg City Council special meeting minutes. Do we have a motion for this item?
Make a motion that we approve, uh, special meeting, uh, January twenty-fourth.
Second.
Question by Miss Laura, second by Mr. Veal. Is there any discussion before we call for the vote? And, and Ms. Bar, could you please call for the vote?
Ms. Laura?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Dave Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Veal?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
I will abstain since I was not there.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to staff reports, uh, Attorney Vera, do you have anything, uh, in addition to the written report that you provided council this evening? And, uh, like to, uh, introduce, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, uh, to the public, DM, that this is your first, uh, full-fledged meeting.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. My name is Catherine Vera. I'm with the law firm of Hoffman, Parker, Wilson and Carberry. We're located in Denver and we specialize in serving municipal clients. Um, I'm excited to work with the city.
Thank you.
Um, I don't have anything in addition, um, just of course that I drafted that resolution today. And I think I included some of the research about the recall issue, uh, which I responded to you about. Um, so I think that's it.
Thank you. And I really appreciate the fast turnaround on that resolution.
Yeah, sure thing.
Mr. Martinez?
I don't have anything.
Uh, did you have any questions for Attorney there? Okay. Uh, moving on, uh, Administrator Davis's report, uh, do you have anything in addition to the written report that you provided?
Uh, not this evening.
Uh, does council have any questions for Administrator Davis, uh, Mr. Veal?
Nothing right now.
Mr. Jennings?
I have nothing.
Miss Laura?
It wasn't included in my package, so I wasn't aware that it was ready. And I'm sorry, I guess I'll just have to start looking on the web.
And, uh, it looked like to me at least, uh, wh- the breakdown that happened, uh, the uh, updated packet material wasn't necessarily sent out to each individual council member, but when it was updated, uh, to the drive folder, uh, if you were to go back into your drive folder, uh, you, you can find those enclosures, uh, that have since been, uh, uploaded. Is that correct, Ms. Davis?
Yes, ma'am. Sir, sorry. Yeah, it's there now.
Uh, Mr. Martinez, did you have anything? Ms. Maze?
I just want to say thank you for the water hall update. I really appreciate those numbers and figures.
Yeah, good.
So I would like to state that we wouldn't have been able to pull that together if it hadn't have been for, um, some of our volunteer assistance.
Great job. So, thank you.
They, uh, yeah, we, we went through every application, made sure that the information was accurate. And we're at least now in a position to, uh, uh, um, submit letters to appropriate people. So.
I think it just helps with the water discussions we had earlier. There's some of that. So thank you. I appreciate that. Look forward to more.
Was there anything else, uh, for Ms. Davis? We'll go ahead and move on to, uh, city accounting report. Mr. Moore, uh, do you have anything in addition to the written report that you provided, sir?
No, there's nothing on the top of my head at the moment. Um, if there was a thought I had earlier, if it comes back to me, I, I might want to bring that up. Uh, so far this will do for the moment.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Maze, did you have any questions for Mr. Moore?
Neither of us.
Mr. Martinez?
No.
Miss Laura?
I'm sorry, you went too fast. I have some questions regarding some of the, uh, reports. Um, the, especially the service order list. We used to get the addresses where the water was turned off in, uh, sewer blocks. And I'm wondering why that's no longer included on there. Um, I kind of like to keep track. I've been monitoring how many urchs we change, how many meters. And from this, I can't totally rewrite my, um, report because I can't tell now who was where or what. And we're also having a lot of shut offs yet. Um, and I forgot to bring that. It's, I think, in two thousand and eight, we have to red tag a person and give them ten days before we actually turn them off. Are we doing that?
I'm not aware of a red tag process. So in response to addresses, addresses are, uh, identifiable components. So that's not something that made available.
You get them in many reports, but you can give those to just us. I mean, that's what you normally do.
Well, no, I personally wouldn't feel comfortable with, uh, you know, folks that unfortunately have had to have their water shut off due to delinquent payment or otherwise, uh, even council being aware of it, it's not so much the important thing isn't so much who or where these turn offs happened. It's the number that, at, at least in my opinion, the council should be worried about, not specifically who got their water shut off.
Well, but areas, because Spanish Peaks Apartments actually had many of their residents where their water was shut off. We had five in one building where the water was shut off. And it wasn't their fault. So that's why I like to keep track. So that's why I like to keep track.
Did you have anything for, uh, Mr. Moore before we move on to stuff?
Uh, the report for Mr. Moore. Well, and I guess it's actually not his report, but the paid invoice report is from last time. It's the same thing as last time, so, um, I guess part of my concern is, um, too many questions, but the, uh, census. What is that John Hancock? Wha- wha- what is that company?
John Hancock.
Census, it's at the very end.
They serve our, uh, retirement program for the city. They go by several names, a census, future plan, John Hancock. Though, uh, that's been a rather confusing process to work through recently. However, John Hancock is the name that all the employees will recognize as the, uh, company that's handling our retirement for one K programs.
Okay, and so it's hard to tell with this report, but, um, MGPM, is this an additional ten thousand eight hundred dollars that we paid them, or is this still part of previous payment to them?
Uh, payments made to MGPM now are for the twenty twenty-two audit preparation.
I mean, the amount of money that was paid though, for on this report, it's dated February second, but it's still January, I mean, of twenty twenty-two?
The report you have is only the January, uh, and the invoice paid to MGPM will be for the twenty twenty-two audit.
So are we gonna get a more current report next time, or are you just gonna give us the, um?
So that.
Expenditure to revenue report.
Uh, the next meeting will be the expenditure revenue report.
Mr. Jennings, did you have any questions for Mr. Moore?
Uh, no, I don't.
Mr. Veo?
Nothing right now.
Yeah, uh, anything else?
So I see on here about there was an issue on W twos. It looks like it was resolved, so did everybody get their W twos on time?
Uh, yes, they did.
Thank you.
Very fortunate, yeah.
Mr. Martinez, did you have anything, sir?
No.
If there's nothing further from counsel, we'll go ahead and move on to the paid invoice report provided by, uh, Ms. Bar, uh, the council, have any questions or concerns regarding, uh, that, uh, Ms. Mate? Mr. Martinez?
No.
Miss Laura?
Is it a specific amount of times per month that we pay bills or pay them as they come in? Cause it seems like the pay dates are getting further apart.
Nope. Pay processes, it's not on a strict schedule by any means. So, uh, ideally, most of the invoices are going to appear at a routine time. As I recall, we were running about two issues of checks typically. But, uh, in January, I, I'm not certain that we got a full two runs out, maybe a full run, a partial run.
Okay, cause it only shows one date for checks issued.
And it was, that would be the only processing point in January.
Okay, so, but we're making sure that we're not being delinquent, right?
We're making every effort to not be delinquent, but, uh, uh, I've noticed that we are getting some invoices that have not been paid up. We've had a couple of customers who are firing about that.
And why is that? Why aren't they getting paid?
It's difficult to pin that down. We have a dedicated email for delivery of the invoices. Uh, we try to keep customers, uh, aware of that portal to make sure that they get the invoices in and get paid in a timely fashion. Uh, but I have noticed that we still have a little bit of stretch to do. Some of these invoices are a compliment. Report. You'll also notice I've added on there a general ledger period. And that's going to show you where we're getting the payments, uh, into what period. Which makes a big difference for the twenty twenty-two example. The system was having invoices placed in different periods. And the, without anyone understanding how the AP system was working, that is in twenty twenty-one, it created an issue for the, uh, audit preparation, and for twenty twenty-two, it's, it's also been an issue. And, uh, the CPA has, has spent a number of, of work hours in trying to get the AP multiple ledger posting issues sorted out.
And how involved are you with them in learning the process and everything? Cause they're supposed to just be our guidance, and then that will come to you, and you will be responsible for doing all of that.
Well, they have to go through and review as they, they are prepping for the audit, so they are hands-on.
They're our pre-auditors, and, and they were just supposed to help us until you could get to a point where you're comfortable by yourself.
Right, and, and twenty twenty-two has a number of issues, and I've mentioned the AP issue before, as well as the utility billing problem from the beginning of twenty twenty-two. Those are two hurdles that their assistance is, is a major, a help to try and, uh, get unweeded. So the audit will be ready on time.
Mr. Jennings, did, uh, you have any questions related to, uh, the city treasurer report?
Uh, not at this time.
Mr. Veo?
I think we're doing better. I don't see that many, uh, checks coming through that are late.
Thank you. Uh, is there anything further from counsel before we move on? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to citizens' comments. I'd like to remind everybody that we have a three-minute time limit. Uh, and, uh, we'll go ahead and cycle through our folks that are in-house first. If you haven't already and you wish to speak, uh, please sign up on, on the clipboard, and then, uh, we'll get to anybody on Zoom that may wish to speak. Uh, who do we have up first, Ms. Bar?
Bombrea. That was very good. Okay, uh, my name is Alan, uh, Bombrea, and I guess my, uh, my main thing is about transparency. Actually, it's three little points, but it all relates to transparency. Um, uh, i- it, this all revolves around our latest water incident. And I, I'm new here. I've been here a hundred days. So I'm an ignorant newbie, so if I'm missing a resource, I hope you guys can help me out here. Um, but it didn't seem like there was a lot of good information flow about what was going on. Things are, people were getting alerted like hours or, you know, finding out about things days later. Um, but the thing that bothers me the most is in the hundred days I've been here, I've seen these little water incidents, but nobody talks about doing a root cause analysis and what the long-term plan is to fix the infrastructure here. There's gotta be, there's gotta be some kind of plan. We can't just keep on going the way we're going. Um, my third thing is information resources for newcomers. Um, I'm finding it hard to find information about vital things. Um, I couldn't even find voter registration information when I walked into this building. Um, so if there are newcomer kind of resources, um, that should be published more, and if it doesn't exist, I believe it should. Uh, finally, this ditch thing. Um, I noticed somebody on social media. I asked the city to do something, or if that doesn't happen, can we get some citizens together? And I think it would be great that if nothing is happening right now, if the city would actually encourage citizen action, not just for this, but for anything we might need. You know, we're, we're here to improve our community, hopefully. And that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bombrea. No, well, I won't be able to touch on, uh, all the topics that you've raised, uh, your concerns related to infrastructure and what the city's plans are currently. Right now, well, a- as we all know, uh, the lines within our city are, uh, uh, well past their service life. A lot of these projects were installed in the nineteen thirties through, uh, the Works Progress Administration. They're actually that old and some actually even older, uh. One of the main concerns that, uh, council lately has been tackling is our gas transmission line, uh, that runs between here and Trinidad as a, that could really put a lot of citizens in a life-threatening situation should that go out. A- another one, uh, we're currently about thirty years past its, uh, service or anticipated service life. And then, uh, the other big focus of this council right now is our raw water line, which is, enables us to even have water in, uh, our, uh, uh, aging infrastructure here in town, uh. There's certainly, uh, plenty of areas that need attention here in town, and, uh, our, uh, administrator has been looking into the grant funding opportunities that are available out there to, uh, address these needs. And, uh, hopefully, we can start seeing some movement going forward on that. Uh, who do we have, uh, next, Ms. Bar?
Oh, one, one comment. Uh, there is a family resource center on Seventh and Russell, I believe. They might have some information for you. I just picked up, and I can't remember where I got it, a yellow flyer with information on different, uh, services. I think it is it, I don't know, do you know? Is it through Hula? Anyway, I'll see if they can put them around more, um, but I'll see if I can get you a copy of that, too.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
As far as, uh, some additional features, uh, the city webpage doesn't have, uh, uh, the Werfino dot U S website, which would be the Werfino County webpage, has a number of resources, uh, that I think you'll find useful to, uh, online G I S maps and such. I apologize for interrupting you, Ms. Bar.
Mr. Niceman, you want to speak of the golf course music festival?
There's students in the mail and I plan to go, so I, I thought it was pretty interesting. My, um, I haven't talked to you. It's really about Walsenburg, the destination. Incredible. I'll be honest, and I wouldn't mind having that on my hat. That's, that's really nice. But, but Gary said, no way it was a city's deal risk. Um, and I, I really found that an interesting, um, just living here. Hey, Ryan, um, Brett Clark, Brett Don. They, they all, all do this, and, uh, I've been involved in running the question quite a bit. We made money. Uh, we kept the golf course open all year. Uh, I think, all the money they made there. Um, starting Bloom is approved for next year. This year, they had nine thousand paying customers, apparently. And I just wondered, how can somebody walk away? This is a multi-million dollar business. And they have three hundred acre scale pasture. And they bring nine thousand people, uh, five miles away. And we're asleep, it seemed to me like. There's pulling traffic down going right in front. And you put up a, a, a sign, uh, it seemed to me, and, and lots of a lot of people.
Thank you, Mr. Niceman. Who have next, Ms. Bar?
Cynthia Questwell, she wanted to speak of the billing and the invoice, this question.
Mayor, city council, welcome to our new attorney, Mr. Moore, Ms. Davis, Ms. Laura. Um, I have a couple of things. First one is real easy. Everybody's touching on it. I haven't hard copied bills yet. They haven't been uploaded to express pay. And this comments, is there a twenty-four hour notice being given prior to shut off? As opposed to just shutting people's bill up? That's all part of the question, so I don't know if you can answer all of it, or if you want to, or you want me to ask my second question, and then you.
So on your statement, it has a shut off notification on a date. So that serves as notice for individuals who do not, aren't current with their billing of what date, at which point they will lose service.
A- and I'm sorry, but that's not what the ordinance says.
Well, the reason I ask is because where I come from, if you are getting ready to get shut off, you get a tag on your gate that tells you you have twenty-four hours. You either go pay your bill or you get shut off. So that's why I was curious.
I used to get things.
I think it's ten days.
They used to bill it, they used to handle it.
They did used to do that.
That's why I was just curious.
I'm not familiar with that, so, yeah, look into it from a billing standpoint.
Okay, and do you have a possible date as to the hard copy bills or upload to express bill pay?
They went out today. Yeah, I don't want to say that your bill's in the mail, but literally your bill's in the mail.
That's just checked express bill and it is on there.
Okay, um, thank you. My next thing is from the paid invoice report. And I've got a couple of things. Uh, the first one is there was a check written for the pool for three ninety-three forty-six on page two of the report. Uh, we're not doing anything with the city pool, so who are we writing checks for? That's the first one. I'll ask them all, then you can answer. Um, the second one, uh, there's uniform charges and they're different. And if we're paying for uniforms, getting placed by the same uniform, so between that's a sewer and, and all that stuff, shouldn't be all be the same price. And also, um, you're paid, would they pay weekly and opposed to monthly? And I, I believe we all went under the same GL account. I'm not sure. Um, your drug test. They're all priced differently. Nothing is consistent. There are also, I know, I'm curious if that's true. There's different vendors that are doing the tests. Uh, if you get, and they're not contracted, they're wanting to go through their price, your GL account code's different for everybody's drug test. I didn't take the time to go try and find out the definition of the GL account codes, but they're coming out of different funds. So.
Departments.
Different departments, that's why, okay. Um, same thing for the, um, for the janitorial on page five, it's also, um, there's four invoice states, all the same date, all the same amount. They all come out of different funds.
That's standard procedure.
Is this standard procedure? There's not just a janitorial code that you go under?
The, the last four digits are the janitorial code, and then the, some services are distributed across the different funds.
Okay, so that's the, why the difference.
Yeah, that's why you see it that way.
Okay, that's fine, then, um. And Mr. Hyatt, if you're listening, Mr. Hyatt, please don't take offense. Um, was there not an agreed upon dollar amount for him for his, um, retainer services for the last month from
That's correct.
Retirement, too, because everything was different. There was a six hundred dollar, two eight hundred dollar, and an eighteen hundred dollar.
That's also the split to the different funds.
Okay. Okay, that's it.
So that, an answer to your bill to the swimming pool? We had a company go in and they had to fix the heater so that we wouldn't freeze the pipes.
Oh, okay. Okay, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Who do we have up next, Ms. Bar?
Sarah Robb, she wanted to speak about the mercantile. Hi, all. Mr. Jennings, it's nice to put a face to the nameplate. Um, you're very, thanks for clarification on, um, the ordinance for the certificate of occupancy. And Mr. Jennings, I have a question for you. All the things to bring up tonight, I'm curious why you brought up the fact that you wanted the mercantile to have special, um, thing, special handling, shall we say, for the certificate of occupancy? Um, is that something, if you wanted to change it, I'm sure that you guys could end up changing the ordinance so that it would affect everyone, not just the mercantile?
It was just a question that I seen, it's what she had worked on this last month. And I didn't know what was going on with the cease and desist order. The only thing.
Yeah, it was there for a reason. It was, um.
And that's why I asked the question.
Yeah.
I know.
Well, you didn't want me to do it more to, in my words, handhold, to get this accomplished for them, and I think that they have received more assistance than the, uh, citizens of, of Walsenburg have. I mean, we're, if, if we're gonna do for the citizens what we're doing for the mercantile with that regard, um, I don't think there'd be any handholding.
I think it should be across the board.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's for us to get more business in this community.
Well.
This could be across.
Show favoritism just because.
I'm not showing favoritism. How do you say that?
Okay.
Okay.
Well, it's nice to see that you're here, and I hope that you continue to do that. And, um, Ms. Um, Davis, thank you very much for all that you've been doing. Um, I happen to be able to see firsthand, and that woman never stopped. Um, I happen to be able to see firsthand and that woman never stops. So you guys are definitely getting your money's worth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Up. Uh, who do we have next, Miss Bar?
Brian the Geese. One is wondering, I'm asking about the camera locator.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry to be in late. Hopefully that wasn't too disruptive. Um, I wanted to say thank you to the council for approving the camera and locator system for the city. It's long, long overdue. Master Palmer and the only ones really working here on a regular basis. I wish I owned one. Um, I have worked with Rungy Tool for decades. And you guys got a better deal than they would get to me. So uh, thank you, Ms. Davis, for putting in homework on that. Um, my question being, is that going to be available to help residents locate their lines or fully for city use within the city streets now? Are we going to be able to locate uh like lateral lines? Because that's a big problem here. There's these records of any of that stuff. People ask me, can we dig it? Um, I have no idea. There's no way to go and look. But can that be done? Is is there any process to that or will there be any process to that in the future?
Apparently, we don't have a process for that predominantly because of concerns about the condition of the lines. As you know, that's a pretty expensive piece of equipment.
Absolutely.
Sometimes we're reluctant to put it into our own lines.
Yeah.
But um I at the moment, there is no plans. There are some uh private enterprises that do have camera equipment um available and we can certainly make those available. Uh, their contact information available.
Yeah, I'm aware of at least one, uh maybe maybe two suspects, but uh yeah, I just was wondering with that big price hack uh that the city is going to be footing, if there's any way to benefit the unless it's the people that look here. And the another question is, is there, uh, I know we have a lot of sewer mammals that you've already purchased. It's that what is the um, do we have a timeline for the the high for higher contractors to get started on some of those lines?
I anticipate having, um, so our engineering firm G M S has put together the information in regards to flows, elevations, that kind of thing. I anticipate having uh those documents by tomorrow. At which point we'll be able to put an R F P together and advertise. We'll have three different sewer projects um available for uh individuals to take a look at.
Oh, that's awesome. I have a couple of interested parties from Denver. They're looking uh to for that R F P. So thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you for talking.
Mr. Gees.
Aubrey Lichten, she wanted to speak about the zoning and recall.
Great. Um, I'm Aubrey Lichten. I'm at the Crafty Canary Brewery. Um, I have some questions. Um, so that I know where to go in regards with my business because I have been stalled for almost a year now. Um, with the expansion of my brew hub, um, which I had intended to move into the basement of the mercantile. Um. Bro, um. So last I heard, um, there was not going to be a discussion at least regarding um ordinance eleven seventy-three, which is um the distillery pub zoning or ordinance. Um, so on December sixth, um, the council stated the recall as reason why they did not want to discuss um that ordinance. Um, I find that that kind of validates some of the reasons as to why the recall was it happened in the first place. Um, so I'm wondering. Um, Daniel said during that meeting uh that the city needs to find an inspector, a fire inspector and a building inspector to work with. How we found that?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I get contact? How do I go about contacting them to check out the space? What do I need to do?
You need to notify me that you want a fire code inspection and then we'll contact them. Do you have plans and blueprints of your building with specifications on?
We turned that, yeah, like, oh, gosh. Eight months ago, nine months ago, back in June, I turned that information in.
We never got.
And and you're no ma'am.
Never saw the plans for the brewery. So may I ask then, why in the meetings that I have attended where I spoke in support of my brewery, have you not directly asked me for any of that information and instead laid that onus on the landlady, Erica and Heather?
It's a excuse. Permit, ma'am, so.
Well, I have not so.
We have not seen any documents whatsoever on a design for anything. And and if we
even that's been.
An inspection, it's it's an entire building inspection.
Sure.
So it's all upper three levels and the basement.
Okay.
On a fire code inspection.
And so that building was inspected to have at least the Airbnb and the businesses that exist in there. Per the inspector that previously worked for the city was my understanding.
That was not a comprehensive fire code inspection. They met minimum requirements, but they may not meet necessarily fire code criteria.
Wasn't that just for the main and second and third floors? Just that little portion? That was the only thing?
So the north side was uh received a T C O and a C O for first, second, third floors. There's nothing on the basement and we've never seen plans for the basement.
Okay, um, so what you guys need from me is a plan for the basement and what where my brewing setup will be. Um. Okay. Um, can you give me a list of everything that I need to do to satisfy that? Because there has been a whole lot of speculation about my business and my equipment, et cetera, and that has all been brought up. I'm I'm just confused why we even spoke about that in the first place. If you guys didn't see these plans that I that were submitted, or at least I I did submit to have them submitted to you guys. Um, I would happily do that again because again, I am just a I I would like to rent this space in the basement of the mercantile. That's it. That is my affiliation. So that was my landlady.
The zoning for the brewing did not pass. That brewery part did not pass by this council.
Uh, that was for uh ordinance for a brew pub license?
It was to change the zoning.
Right. And that was just for brew pub license, not brewery brewery or like, so you guys like got very specific on the language there. Why?
Because you requested a brew pub.
I didn't.
That's what was requested in the June meeting, S O S.
Yeah.
Brew pub.
I did request a.
That is what the property agreed to, and that is what our lawyer drew up.
Okay, and I recall trying to at at least advise the lawyer that that was um that kind of restrictive to other industries that might have wanted to use that space for industrial, I bought light industrial, which is what that was selling for, which is what we fall under. We are an industrial business according to the state making beer. Um, so I'm just, I'm just, I am confused. So you're telling me that I cannot?
I'm just saying that's what happened here. I don't know what.
And I I've spent all of these meetings and I often see you guys refer to other people in the audience and ask many questions. Um, so you're telling me right now that I cannot have my brewery in the mercantile or in zone? What is that? C three?
It's a light industry.
What is the zone that?
L one.
L one. So I cannot have a brew pub license in.
Not at this time.
Not at this time and when.
Not approved.
There be a time.
Well, you'd have to approach that yourself.
And the zone. How have I not? I'm I'm excuse me, how how can I approach that myself?
And if I, if I may, if I may counsel, because uh we're we're starting to get over overtime and working on each uh citizen the equal amount of time. If I may, the the fact of the matter is this council did not find that uh development favorable. Uh, I I certainly disagreed with it. I think it lends to some of the statements that uh Mr. Jennings had as far as uh the council arbitrarily uh impeding development and business, but uh uh at some later date, I hope that culture attitudes can change amongst this board to where.
It survives that long, honestly, because it's been killing us to not be able to.
I hope many others do as well.
Um, so I'd like to at least finish one, one last question. Um. Uh, Ms. Laura, um. Ms. Mays, I mean, Mr. Be Hill, do you all recall um saying that the recall?
It's your.
The 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 first recall, I'm I'm gonna go ahead and go over time real quick, just because I think that there's it answers a lot of questions. Um. Is it not hypocritical for you to be on another recall board after suggesting that it's a waste of time and taxpayer money? With initial recall?
I'm not on it, so.
Okay, so you.
I just let my name. They wanted to use my like name and I let them.
It's all right. It's their right. It's our right to to file another petition.
Yes, it is.
I just wonder, is it not hypocritical for you to be doing so after you?
That whole thing was.
What are you talking? If I may, the whole council, Ms. Lichten. That's a very valid point that you raised, but I apologize. We have to uh abide by our 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 time limits.
You for your time.
Oh, thank you for speaking with us. Uh, Miss Bar, do we?
And that's part of the reason we're being recalled. Not going and it's not water.
If I may.
Go ahead. I'm finished. I got my piece out.
Who knows in town?
Uh, who do we have on Zoom this evening?
Miss Bars, do we have any? Uh, Mr. Deckard. Uh, Mr. Decker, can you hear us?
Sorry, still on mute. Uh, that was funny. Yeah, sorry. Uh, Ms. Davis, uh, I've talked to Leonard and I've talked to a couple of different folks in utilities. I sent you an email last week. I still do not have a date or at least a guest limited date as to when my water can get turned on. So I can at least get a T C O from Mr. Mondragon to sleep in my tiny house. Do we have something on that?
I can check and get back with you tomorrow, to be honest. Um. I did see your email and I apologize. I got a little tied up in things last week, so.
I that's I I understand you guys are busy and I I get that and I I sent that to you instead of the water department because I knew they were probably busy with something called a fourteen inch main line break. I don't know. They might have been a little busy.
Thank you.
I so that that's.
I'll have an answer for you tomorrow.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, it that's the other thing is that email responses, I've noticed, I know other people have noticed. Even if you have an auto reply, I would appreciate it. And you know, with the timeline of a couple of business days, especially when it comes down to trying to schedule getting down there to move in kind of a thing. If I recall correctly, I'm going to change topics here for the water issues. Do not, we already have a project in process that's cataloging our water lines and our sewer lines such that we know the material and location, at least to a small degree, most of them. Is that correct? Or I know sewer is a part of that, but do we have the same thing for the water lines?
Currently, we do not have a study on the water lines. We do have a completed study on our sewer lines.
Okay, so then the only thing I would say is that for that for that main break, if are we documenting and I'll quote Alan here getting an R C A, which he and I probably know from the same reasons of why we need those things. Do we have an R C A of what happened, why it happened? Because is it the material? Is it the erosion? Is it a, you know, water break? And are we tracking those things for every one of the water breaks that we do have? You don't have to answer right now, but it's like, that's the suggestion from, you know, geeks like me. If we track that stuff, it helps in the future when we put together needs for uh replacements and stuff like that.
Or the answer is yes.
Okay, cool. So uh I would also like to reclarify, I've said this a couple of times. The L I light industrial allows for a brewery only by default due to it is classified by the F D A as food production. It is, it is, it is. It is strictly a building permit item that goes, it does not require city council approval. It does not require going through planning and zoning. It is already qualified and is only a permit request. So I that is in the reading of all of the mu- muni codes for the city of Walthamburg, light industrial, and also how the F D A applies the production of beer in this country. So if we want to help small businesses, that'd be an awesome thing to get approved really soon. My two cents on that one. So uh, Ms. Davis, hope you're back for your my uh water. I appreciate to get moved in sometime soon so I can maybe attend in person. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Deckard. Uh, who do we have up next, Miss Bar?
DeMay Sandoval.
Good evening, Ms. May Sandoval.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, my name is DeMay Sandoval. I'm a resident of Pueblo, a native of Walthamburg. There ain't no place like home. I would just like to comment on the ongoing comments about the city and the mercantile. The mercantile Facebook chat, Facebook page shows regularly that they are active, functioning and continuing to sell their wares and food. They just had a grand opening for good ups, classes for sip and paint, cell phone instruction classes on and on. The north end of the building is and has been functional. So it is really surprising to hear a council person stating that the city is appearing to shut down business, M P dis- M P business, whatever it is that the mayor and Mr. Jennings wants to call it. Not only does the city and the mercantile need to work together to cease and desist satisfied, council needs to protect the city, its citizens and support the new city attorney in her knowledge about upholding cease and this and desist. It's ridiculous, Mr. Jennings, that you don't know what's going on in your own community. The mercantile is functioning. That north end of the building is operational. No one is impeding business. It's all out there on Facebook for you to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. May Sandoval. Uh, who do we have next, Miss Bar?
Jenna.
Jenna, if you don't mind uh stating your last name, uh.
Yes.
I believe you may be muted.
Am I still muted?
Oh, I I think you're good. If you don't mind uh stating your last name and then providing your comment.
So my name is Jenna Fox. Um, first of all, I really wanted to come in to tell Gay Davis that I'm really happy that she's in this position. I'm not so sure she's happy about it, but I have so much confidence in you, Gay. And I'm really glad that you're here and that you're a part of this, even though the mayor didn't vote for you. And I'm putting that in there because he seems to want to put in his own personal comments that are derogatory many of the times. So Gay, I know you're an invested um citizen of also this community as well. So I really applaud you and um all the hornets nest that you've gotten yourself into by taking this position. I really honor that in you. Also, I would like to make a comment about this um city council recall. When I had first heard about this, my heart was really sad. Because whoever started this, and we all know who it was, half of you guys are going to be gone this year because you're going to be timing out, term out. Many of you were just voted in when this whole recall started. And I said once and I'll say it again, it was pinpointed towards the two women sitting there at city council. And it's a shame that this first group wanted to spend the city's money to do this when they could have waited until this year to vote in new people. So I would say shame on them for even bringing that up. Second of all, the second recall is for the mayor only. And there are people on this recall because the issues really started with him within two months stating that he thought these two city councilwomen should be recalled or resigned. Now, I don't agree with everything that these women do, and I think would be wrong if any of us did. We don't have all the facts because they're sitting up there. We're only hearing things when we sit in the audience and information that we get. You know, the city could be really great. And as far as the brewery, I'd really like to see this town have more businesses. I would like to see the brewery expanded. But you know, everybody has to go about it the same way. And I don't, I I'm just so disheartened to hear all of this. I would commend all of you that are sitting up there for taking this position at what, three hundred dollars a month? It's a headache. So you know, that's as trade as Stacy Decker likes to say, that's my two cents. You have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox.
Thank you, Ms. Fox.
Who do we have uh next, Miss Bar?
I don't see anyone else in the no one else has their hands up.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to uh unfinished business as uh we don't have any presentations or public hearings tonight. Uh, one of my fellow council members mine uh providing the second reading for ordinance eleven seventy-six.
I'll move to F uh ordinance seven eleven seventy-six on second reading and ordinance amending section of chapter six, article one of the Walthamburg municipal code to conform with the municipal code of Senate Bill twenty. to conform with the municipal code of Senate Bill twenty-two dash zero three two as it relates to business licenses of retailers without physical presence in the city or only incidental physical presence in the city.
Second.
Uh, motion and a second. Is there any discussion from council related to this? Uh, I I suppose I should pr- provide a quick overview, uh. This ordinance is needed so that our statutes align with, uh, recently passed state uh, state laws, uh, and as those relate to, uh, the ability to, uh, charge a license to folks that are doing business either incidentally or do not physically have a presence here in town. Uh, Mr. Jen, or, uh, Mr. Veal, do you have any, uh, questions or comments? Mr. Jennings?
No, not at this time.
So.
No.
Martinez?
No.
Uh, Ms. Mace?
We have to allow public comment?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Um, and as this is an ordinance, uh, it's an opportunity for the public to find if they would like. Uh, I see we have, uh, Mr. Robert Ellsworth in the back. If you don't mind stepping to the podium, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I'm curious as to if ordinance, so let's say I am not living in. And it's at the Museum of Friends and it's gonna be sold. I mean, I'm doing business there. I follow in that category.
Um, I I believe that would be an incidental presence. Is that correct, Ms.?
I think that does constitute a physical presence if your business, if you're, if you have a business and you're physically selling within the city.
Any store owner, anybody outside that people, um, that could be a very bad thing. That could drive a lot of people.
Thank you. And unfortunately, this, uh, comes down to one of those, uh, gold unfunded states. Did we have any other, uh, public comments, uh, in-house? Uh, don't see any. Uh, do we have any on Zoom? Uh, if so, please raise your hand. Hey, uh, Ms. Bar, could you please call for the vote for ordinance eleven seventy six, uh, second reading?
Ms. Mace?
Yes.
Ms. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Veal?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Getting?
Yes.
Hey, Brian?
Yes. Hey, moving on to new business. First up, we have, uh, Ms. Tyra Avila, the city administrator for the town of Aguilar. Uh, Ms. Avila had reached out to me, uh, concerning, uh, uh, some discrepancies with the, uh, gas billing amounts between the city of Walsenburg and, uh, the town of Aguilar. Uh, just to build those of you in that aren't aware, uh, with our gas transmission line running in close proximity to Aguilar, uh, we do provide, uh, natural gas, uh, supply to, uh, the citizens of Aguilar, uh. Thank you for joining us, uh, this evening, Ms. Avila, and, uh, I'll go ahead and give you the floor.
Evening, everybody, Mayor and Council. Um, according to our records, um, there was a discrepancy at the end of last year into the beginning of this year. And we paid the two statements at the end of November and December into this year, which we had a balance forward of zero. And then we received the statement for, um, the next following bill, and it said the previous balance was thirty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-five. We did not receive a statement from the city of Walsenburg for February, March, and April. And now we retired, um, from April the fourth until June the eighth. And we have all the audit trail reports that we get from the gas department. Um, taking all of this from the beginning of it to the end of it, you don't owe that money.
So how much have you paid total?
How much what?
Have you paid to get you to the zero? What did you pay to get you to the zero?
All of that number years, the total.
Okay, but you don't have that number. And when was that paid?
Um, at the end of last year.
End of, in December?
And I had a difficult time getting hold with somebody here in the office. Um, I actually had to call your gas superintendent to ask him to come to the office too, but one of the ladies knows to call it. Um, I did speak to Ms. Davis and we had conflict. Um, I did speak to Mr. Moore. Um, emails I received from them were very inappropriate, I believe, telling me that town of Aguilar is irresponsible for not paying their bill. Um, I'm not very happy with that. I mean, there is an issue. I tried to reach out. I sent them the information. Nothing was resolved. And then I got a letter from Ms. Davis. Um, it was during January twenty-three. And when I spoke to Mr. Moore, he stated that the consumption multiplier was either a one or a ten. He was asking me, I don't know what your guys' billing is.
We would have to get that off the meter, wouldn't we? We'd have to know what the meter is in order to know what the specific multiplier is.
So there were several months.
I'm sorry, we don't have any information, so.
Mr. Moore, who was this?
Oh, that one.
We have this.
So there was an email. And he provided the figure showing as January, um, interlaced of the amount. The digits were six digits and he was saying that the amount billed total was four thousand four hundred and seventy-one. On the bill that we received, it was forty-four thousand seven, uh, seven hundred and ten. But the information they provided me from their billing system, there was a month that everything was estimated, which we were double charged for that amount.
So was the meter changed out?
No, there's no change to the meters.
So it went from a multiplier one to a multiplier ten?
The multiplier is not associated with the meter. It's associated with the billing system.
Right, and therefore creates bad bills if you don't have the correct multiplier, right?
Twenty-one to twenty-two.
So on this report that you gave us from eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, have a multiplier of one, and in twenty-two, it has a multiplier of ten.
So some of our bills have a seven-digit and some of them have a six. Then at the end of November, the ninth, I received as correspondence from the city administrator stating that we have a substantial amount due of twenty-eight thousand six hundred and seventeen.
So, Mr. Moore, do you have the amounts that were paid for these years? Showed us kind of list, but total amounts and when they were paid?
Those are the meter reads and the consumptions that you see there. The billing amount is not attached to that.
As of right now, we've paid sixty thousand dollars to the city.
What do you, what do you like normally pay? I mean, obviously you have a long.
According to the warmer months, there's not any way that the town could use.
But just like on an annual basis, what, what do you normally pay?
So eighty-six thousand, depending, depending on if it's cold or not.
And the sixty thousand that you paid, is that for the whole year of twenty-twenty-two?
No, it's partial of this year as well. The start of the one that we just paid was twenty-two thousand two twenty-six forty-nine.
I must say, council is at somewhat of a disadvantage here, uh, given the limited amount of information that was provided, uh, in the city of Walsenburg, uh, just this evening and, uh, really not. It 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 it's one thing to hear the, hear the numbers as you relay them, Ms. Avila. It's a whole nother thing to have these on, uh, spreadsheets. I I think it really helps, uh, with, uh, council's understanding of the issue. Uh, I suppose, uh, to to boil it down, uh, what resolution were you seeking, uh, from this board this evening?
Got the thirty-one thousand four twenty-five be lifted into because we were charged double at the end of November, December for an amount that's duplicate on there on the statement that we received. It said it was estimated. Well, where did the estimation come from? And before that, where'd they get the previous balance from? And we didn't receive a bill for February, March, April, then I received one from four, six to six, eight. Then we didn't see one for July and it continued on like this thirty-one thousand four twenty-five. At the end of the year, though, when we paid, um, November and December, our balance is zero coming forth. So where did the thirty-one thousand come from?
By just that first portion first, uh, the Ms. Mr. Mar, uh, Ms. Davis, do you mind, uh, speaking to this, uh, thirty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollar, uh, discrepancy and, uh, what communication you might have already had with the town of Aguilar and where, uh, this misunderstanding might be coming in between the two parties? Initially, we received, uh, communication from Ms. Avila with the concern regarding the, uh, duplicate charges for the month of November. Uh, the city.
Twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty?
That was, uh, yeah, November of twenty-twenty-one. The city, uh, on, apparently, most of our meters don't, does not have a read in November. And I don't know what that is. It seems to be across the system. So in twenty-twenty-one, so the city, of course, will give a customer an estimated read so that the next billing is not exorbitant. And that's a routine practice. It's a routine practice, and no doubt with this town of Aguilar's, uh, billing system. You don't want to burden your customer with a double of charge two months later if you didn't have a meter read the current month. So we did issue an estimated read, as you indicate. And the subsequent billing came following that, uh, did account for the estimated amount that was assessed. Uh, our billing system, uh, Casell that we use uh, usually calculates that properly. Uh, since she expressed the concern, I did double check that. And, uh, I did actually run the numbers several different ways and provided the different modelings of those numbers to Ms. Avila to show that, in fact, there was no duplicate charge with the November estimated read. And she did not, uh, respond whether she agreed or or had some other position to take on that. So I did not know that there would be any further concern on a duplicate billing issue. The next issue that Ms. Avila raised was the usage quantity. So, uh, that has been the most recent contest in the discussion is to how much are we actually billing for? And in that response, I referred to the multiplier. Because in twenty-twenty-two, at the beginning of the year, uh, many of our accounts in the system were changed from a one multiplier to a ten multiplier. That drops the zero off the meter read number and still counts for that because these are big numbers. And we don't read one, uh, unit, two units, three units. The volume that Aguilar consumes is much larger, so dropping that extra zero was, it wasn't necessary to carry it on the bill. I don't know that customers were notified of that change in multiplier, so it could be a surprise. You get a bill, it's missing a zero. It's gone from a seven-digit number that always had a zero on the end to a six-digit number.
It's always six-digit before.
Well, regardless, it it the the numbers change. We dropped the 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 last zero in the number and and employed the multiplier to calculate the usage and it produces the same accurate billing as we had before. And, uh, the billing system that you use in the town of Aguilar would also incorporate multipliers. Uh, if you have larger meters, that's usually how you want to uh, cope with them in your system for your billing process. So I did indicate that we had changed the multiplier. That's why the amounts that appear on the statement appear different. However, the consumption has not changed. And what I provided for you is the historical consumption of the town of Aguilar from twenty-eighteen. So you have five years of history. And if you look at the history, you can see that the consumption, and I've also provided similar information to Ms. Avila. The history shows that the consumption is literally, um, almost exact from month to month, from year to year. So would you care for a copy of that? And honestly, yeah, if you look at twenty-twenty-two, which is the year in question now, um, you'll see at the beginning of the year, their consumption was marginally higher than previous years. And we did have that cold snap where Texas had the freeze and everything like that. So then, as you go forward, uh, February also had slightly higher consumption than prior years. And then, as you roll forward, Aguilar's consumption is generally lower in twenty-twenty-two using our standard meter read moving forward. The last column are the consumption values that Aguilar was proposing. And you see those numbers run about a tenth of what we're billing in some of those instances, and that would be a result of the multiplier. If you literally look at the numbers on the statement, uh, since the late last zero is dropped off, the numbers do appear to have changed significantly. So I tried to provide that explanation in the communication. We didn't receive, uh, a a specific reply from Ms. Avila as to whether or not she had a concern about the multiplier or or how she was, um, going to account for the consumption level because, of course, if we're moving this much gas to the town of Aguilar, Aguilar also has to be selling this much gas, so.
And I did comparable and I will email that to council and we're off. So.
Well, and 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 if I may, counsel, as I said, I feel that we're at a at a disadvantage, given the limited amount of information. What I think would be helpful for the board to help, uh, digest this issue is, uh, of course, we'll have, uh, the video, uh, as record of this, but I think it'd be very helpful to have somewhat of a written, I don't want to call it an explanation, but a description of the issue from the city of Walsenburg as well as, uh, the 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 town of Aguilar and, uh, I really think, uh, with some of the additional information, uh, related to when payments were made and, uh, other, uh, basically proof, uh, the onus being on the, the, on, uh, the city of Aguilar that that these pa- payments were made. Uh, we need some sort of of a documentation to be able to make an informed decision. I just don't see us being able to really take any action on this this evening, given it, given the limited view that we have, uh, Ms. Nice?
If I could make two points, just with the limited information we have. So first of all, Mr. Moore, you weren't here in November of twenty-twenty-one when our billing issue started. What the city did is they estimated the gas portion from the year before. So if you look at twenty-twenty November, the number that's there is the same number that you were billed for in November twenty-twenty-one. They went back a year. And then December came through, it, that that is what you're me, the forty-five thousand was for November and December. It was a double read. Cause our our local bills were the same way. It should, the bill should have adjusted, so I don't know what happened with the bill piece of it. But when I'm looking at twenty-twenty-two and where you have a proposed number versus what the reading was, I find it hard to believe that you used a tenth of what it was when you look at your his history of what was used in those cold months. That to say that the town of Aguilar only used forty-four seventy-one in the month of January, I find that hard to believe.
I mean, it's not my place to make the multiplier.
Right, but I'm just saying, I mean, it's clear that you were using over forty thousand in the month of January.
Problem with that, what my problem is, is that between November and December, we paid all those and then come into the following year in January, had a zero balance. Coming to the statement that came in for January, we have a past due balance of thirty-one thousand seven, uh, four hundred and twenty-five. Where did that come?
So I agree with the mayor. I would love to see all of these. And and that them in front of us. And and very quickly, I think the multiplier is very important because if I get a bill for a hundred dollars and then you say it's a ten multiplier and you either drop a zero or add a zero, that changes my bill from a hundred to either a thousand or ten.
But it kept the unit. But it kept the units the same.
It it kinda kept the units the same except for. It kept the units the same. The zero is really kind of not a number. But I've always been told that that multiplier along with the meter is very important. Isn't that true? Ms. Bar, because you have to make sure when you have a meter, you have the correct multiplier because the meters are different. They're not always the same, so they have to be configured right with that multiplier. That's a very important step. Is what I was told.
We've heard.
Depends on what size the meter is.
That's exactly my point. Why would you change a meter if, a a multiplier if you haven't changed the meter?
The computer people when you're, they're going with those, we're fixing multipliers or different accounts, so they would bill.
Cause I, I'm sorry, can't hear you. Anyway, if we could get the numbers of payments and everything, I think that would help, and I apologize to you. We'll get this figured. Thank you for coming.
And also I do have one more complaint. Well, um, we did have a debt that reached.
And also I do have one more complaint. Well, um, we did have a tech that returned. And it was discussed between one of your city council members and a commissioner in Trinidad, which I think is very unacceptable. And it came out of this office. And so I, I don't appreciate that.
I'm sorry, Ken. I probably don't want to say who it was, but I apologize for that, too.
But, uh, i- if we could, though, uh, to take this up at a later date, though, uh, do you think that you might be able to have any documentation that you would like to provide to council? And then, uh, of course, uh, the city of Walsenburg can provide any documentation to council, uh, preferably, uh, by the Friday prior to our next, uh, meeting. So I. Uh, twenty-first. So ideally, if you could have that to us, uh, by, uh, noon on the seventeenth. Uh, I think that, that'd be, uh, very helpful. Thank you, Ms. Avila. Okay, uh, next up in new business, we have approval of an election hearing officer. Uh, it's my understanding that, uh, Ms. Goldman, who is the advisor that had we, that we had retained to assist us, uh, is in attendance attendance this evening. Uh, Ms. Goldman, are you with us this evening?
Yes, I am.
Good evening, uh. If you don't mind, uh, giving, uh, counsel and the public a quick overview of, uh, some of the key dates that we have to meet. As I understand it, upon, uh, the notification of, uh, all parties of a protest of the recall petitions, uh, this board, uh, now has to schedule uh, the protest hearing date and, uh, I'll leave it to you from there, Ms. Goldman.
Thank you. Um, yes, according to state statute, uh, once a protest has been filed at the next municipal of, or at the next meeting of the municipal officials, the next board meeting, the, um, the board must do two things. Number one, select someone to be the administrative hearing officer at the protest hearing and also to set the hearing date. That hearing date, um, needs to be, uh, conducted within five to ten days after a notice of the hearing is provided to the petitioners, to the protesters and to the, uh, members of the board or the council, excuse me, who are the subject for recall. That notice would go out tomorrow. So, um, those are, and I believe that there are, um, there's some documentation that was provided by, um, Ms. Davis regarding the, um, the appointment and also setting the hearing date.
Did we get something on that?
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Uh, and, uh, as, uh, the council and the public may remember, we had secured, uh, the services of Ms. Goldman as, uh, she is, uh, considered one of the, uh, foremost experts in the state of Colorado as it relates to, uh, the municipal recall process and has an extensive background as a municipal clerk herself, uh. The impression that I got, or at least the thought that I had at the time, uh, was that, uh, Ms. Goldman would, uh, should, uh, the process, uh, take place as it has where we would need a hearing officer, that Ms. Goldman would be the ideal, uh, candidate for that position, given, uh, her non-biased position. She's not a resident of the county. There really is no interpersonal ties, uh, between Ms. Goldman and anybody else, uh, here on the board and, uh, alleviate, uh, some, uh, concerns that exist out in the public, uh. Would a council member entertain a motion to approve Ms. Goldman as, uh, the, uh, election hearing officer?
But she is our consultant and has actually consulted with the Positive Future for Walsenburg Group.
So it might, Mayor, I, I think what you'll find is that Ms. Goldman has, uh, answered questions and responded to informational requests from anybody, including council, as well as multiple parties. The recommendation from administration is that, given uh, the circumstances, there's really only two people who have the background knowledge uh, currently in regards to how to handle these types of situations, Ms. Goldman being one and Mr. Colander, uh, due to having his feet to the flames, being the other person that has, uh, any background knowledge on this particular recall, uh, protest process. The recommendation, uh, is, is that you appoint Ms. Goldman simply because A, there's no one within the community that has the capability to do it. Uh, Mr. Colander is in a position to, uh, likely be called at or subpoenaed potentially as a witness in this process. So that sort of negates his availability as the protest hearing officer. Um, so our recommendation, uh, moving forward is that Ms. Goldman serve in that capacity.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. And, uh, as, uh, Administrator Davis had, uh, stated, the communications that are, have supposed to have been taking place between Ms. Goldman, uh, the council and others, uh, were to be done in a, uh, transparent format with everybody included, as we had discussed, uh, the very night that we had, uh, approved, uh, of, uh, her services. With, uh, Mrs. Davis's recommendation, uh, is there a council member that would like to, uh, present a motion related to this topic?
I'll make a motion to approve Mrs. Goldman as the election protest hearing officer.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Veal and, uh, second by Mr. Jennings. Is there any additional discussion, uh, before we call for the vote, Ms. Nice?
So my concern is that I feel there's this conflict of interest, um, having read all of the protests that were there. Um, they were mailed to my home. They were sent to me via email. I feel that some of the things being protested are decisions that Ms. Goldman made. And I'm not really sure she would have a unbiased opinion.
Mr. Martinez, what are your thoughts?
I I really don't know where to find, uh, impartial judge in the community. Ms. Goldman is more experienced with any of this stuff than, than anybody else. I don't know. How does, how does she feel about doing this? Is this something she's comfortable with? Does she can be unbiased and, and fair with?
Uh, Ms. Goldman, uh, did you hear, uh, Councilman Martinez's question?
Yes, yes, I did. And I also heard, um, Ms. May's, um, concerns. Um, I, I, I will tell you that every this, e- every response that I made to anybody who requested a response was based on an operational, based from an operational perspective and was based on my knowledge and experience with the laws surrounding recall. Um, and as far as being a hearing officer, what a hearing officer does is make, um, findings of fact after listening to all the testimony after receiving any evidence in the hearing and after considering everything in the protest and makes a decision at that point and at that point only. It is true that I have been involved from the beginning. But that is because, uh, for the petitioners, for the protesters, and also for city, uh, city staff. This is a new experience. And so I believe that my role has been one of fact um, and nothing but fact. And I can tell you that on a couple of occasions, I've been asked to make a decision or render an opinion, and I have refused to do so.
Have you read the protests that have come in?
I have absolutely read all the protests that have come in. Yes.
I feel that's a conflict of interest for a hearing person.
Well, if, if I may, if I may comment on that, how do you, how do you, um, how do you deal with a protest that has been submitted if you're not aware of what is in the protest?
That's what I mean, though. You already have all of the information. So it's not like going to a hearing where you're hearing new information. You already have everything in front of you.
Well, that's kind of how the process works.
Well, and i- i- if I may, uh, anybody that is interested in Ms. Goldman's work product, I encourage you to type in Karen Goldman recall opinions. Uh, it, it's as simple as that really in Google. And you'll find a multitude of, uh, the opinions that she has provided for municipalities all across the state of Colorado. And I personally felt that they were very thorough and fair. And the one thing that I recognize in all those opinions is that Ms. Goldman has a very difficult job. It doesn't matter. At the end of the day, someone's gonna be be left feeling, I don't want to say cheated, but certainly discouraged by what her determination might be, uh. The very reason for a pro, uh, petition protest is because somebody feels that there's a gross issue with a protest. It's faulty. It's illegitimate. When told otherwise and after a deliberation of legal facts, of course, folks are going to be upset and, uh, it's a very difficult position for her to be in and really given her expertise, she's one of our best options and especially from a non-biased perspective to review, uh, this for our county here. And should there still be lingering questions, uh, conspiracies floated that somehow Ms. Goldman didn't act on the up and up? Uh, her decision can, and it would be the last stop, basically, but be appealed to the district court where they could make a determination on it. If there's still an issue after that, I, I suppose some conspiracy theories will never be addressed, but.
Um, i- if, if I may, thank you. I was going to mention that my, my, um, my opinion, my findings uh, can be sent to the, um, district court. And I will tell you that in a uh, hearing that I conducted decades ago, my decision was appealed all the way to the Colorado Supreme Court. Um, the Supreme Court upheld my decision and I consider that my fifteen minutes of fame.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Uh, is there any additional, uh, questions or comments from council, uh, related to this, uh, Ms. Laura?
I don't know. It just doesn't seem right. But the only thing is that there has to be a decision because things need to be kind of settled by tomorrow. Um, but I still feel because you have been open to everybody that has sent you questions. And I have asked Mr. Colander and he asked me to send you an email directly. So that's what I've done. Um, so I don't know. I just don't know. I don't know.
Mr. Jennings?
Uh, I'd just like to ask, uh, Ms. Vera, uh, her recommendation or thoughts on this issue?
Yeah, I, I, I'm kind of walking into the middle of this. I, I don't, I'm not aware of the, the history with the consultant. Um, was she hired to field questions about the recall petition in general?
Uh, she was, uh,
To assist the city in the process of.
And, uh, was suggested by, uh, the Colorado Municipal League as well as DOLA. Uh, she's really held in high regard in the state from what I can find.
Okay. I would just ask Ms. Goldman if she's served as a consultant and as a hearing officer for the same municipality for the same recall process.
Um, in the situations where I've been hired as a hearing officer, I, while I have not been officially hired as a consultant, I have been consulted on an ad hoc basis by the municipal clerk in the municipality where I ran the hearing.
Okay.
Did you have any additional thoughts, Ms. Vera?
Yeah, I just don't know if I have any enough information right now.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Mr. Veal?
I don't really think.
Uh, is there anything else from this side of the table, uh, Ms. Nice?
I just feel that I don't know if I can actually vote on this, being one of the subjects of that recall. I feel that I have to abstain from this vote to begin with, so.
That would be three of us right here.
It's your job to vote on the officers.
Yeah, but we're part of the recall. So what does that do with that?
Well, and i- and i- if I may, then with, with that being the case, uh, we would still, uh, have the numbers, I suppose, to, uh, go ahead and vote on this, correct? For a hearing officer?
You don't have three. You have.
If three people recuse themselves, then.
And so a- and so this is very, I guess, uh, hard for me to find the right word because what we had with the recall, uh, effort that took place was citizens exercise their constitutional rights. Now we, now we have this city council arbitrarily impeding the citizen's ability to redress grievances that they have with their government.
To protest.
And I can't help but say some of these conflicts seem to be manufactured internally because we all sat here in a meeting, Ms. Laura. And it was actually Ms. Davis's idea, uh, but that any communication that happens between Ms. Goldman, city council, those involved with the recall would be in an open format so that we're all receiving the same information. Before the very next meeting, Ms. Laura and uh, a few other individuals, uh, that are involved with a recall took it upon themselves to reach out singularly to Ms., uh, Goldman after this clear direction that we were all supposed to move in was given.
Ask Mr. Colander.
So, excuse me.
To contact.
Excuse me, Ms. Laura. So. So it seems like we have roadblocks and issues put up when I, I don't see how we're going to locate anybody more unbiased than a woman that has never met anybody in here, at least to my knowledge, face to face and that lives in Aurora. And that has I really doubt council can find any sort of negative, uh, reports on Ms. Goldman's performance for the numerous municipalities that she's served now for now multiple decades.
This isn't about her. This is about me saying I am one of.
I'm willing to vote it.
That's why I am recusing myself. Has nothing to do with her. Mayor?
Can I just ask that city council move on to a different agenda item? Just give me five minutes to come back to you on a couple of these questions that are pending. Um, so if you just move on to maybe, um, agenda item eight, if you don't need me for that one, I'll just step out for five minutes.
Thank you.
So I, if I might, the only thing I'd like to comment in regards to this is you are seated up there as city council members. You haven't been recalled. There is a process in place for that. There is also a process in place for the protest. It is your responsibility as city council members to appoint an officer to ensure that this process continues as required by state statute. So you need to put aside the fact that you might be involved in this process in a manner that you didn't anticipate. But you are first city council members. And second, you may be affected by this. So short of that, it is your place to designate an individual. That's all I have to say about this.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. And, uh, thank you, Ms. Davis. I agree. And, uh,
So moving.
And, and, and to sort of just, uh, a- as you had said, this isn't a decision where automatically everybody that's subject to the recall, uh, I conduct the meeting, not the attorney. Thank you, Ms. Miss. Uh, we're, we're in a position now to where.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
So are we on to lift the water?
No, actually. I'm speaking on, on this topic. So we're in a position now to where it's not that by us designating a hearing officer, all of a sudden your heads get chopped off. It's up to the voting public, the same way that you got here on council to determine, assuming the protests, uh, uh, how, how that goes. But ultimately, this will be solved at the ballot box. And that's where you should be worried about making your case, not trying to find technicalities to impede the process. Uh, that's all I have to say on that.
No, Mr. Mayor, you said this is for our county. This is for our city.
Yeah, you always say county.
This is for the city.
Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you.
City's the cornerstone of this county, Mr. Everyone.
Yeah, we're the city right here.
So please, please. Thank you. Audience, I would ask that you please be recognized. Mayor, if you might, please go to, uh, item eight is approval to lift water restrictions.
Sure thing. So we'll go ahead and move on to item eight, which, uh, as I had said, we had to do in the form of the resolution, which is resolution twenty twenty-three R three. as I had said, we had to do in the form of the resolution, which is resolution twenty twenty-three R three. Uh, we have a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion that we discuss resolution twenty twenty R three, resolution terminating water conservation measures.
Got a motion by Ms. Laura, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Villa, as we had discussed during our work session. City reservoir levels are now back above capacity and that was the threshold that was uh suggested we meet prior to us removing our watering restrictions. Uh, that was suggested by Mr. Welch, our water engineer. We had to uh change this into the form of a resolution to abide by uh the ordinance pertaining to water conservation measures and how we go about terminating uh those measures once they're put in place. Uh, does council have any questions or comments related to this, uh Ms. Mace? Mr. Martinez?
Uh, I don't have any problem removing the restrictions. Several people mentioned earlier in the work session, we need to monitor the situation better this year than last year. If we start losing a lot of volume out of our lake, we need to revisit uh restrictions again for next for this year. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
I I believe we should lift the water restrictions as well. The problem is that our our, as Mr. Martinez said, are we going to be able to monitor the lakes? We were at city reservoir four hundred and twenty acre feet well above where we're supposed to be at our max on two five. Today it dropped down to four sixteen. So I'm happier with that number, but I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna keep dropping below and then going up and dropping below that we can level Dagger, Waha Toya and City Lake altogether, and we should be able to do that.
You're, well, it, yes and no. What you need to understand is that the water treatment plant did not pull water all weekend. So we get into the first of the week because the tank is full, they didn't need to, the water treatment plant didn't need to kick on to treat water. Now that we are back into uh the start of the week, the water treatment plant is back into operation, so it pulls. So you're going to have these constant
A little bit, sure, I understand.
But having said that, yes, we are in a position to be uh in a in a better position, I should say, to monitor the lake levels and be able to respond appropriately.
Sir Jennings, do you have anything, sir?
I'm for lifting the 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 water, um, heights, but uh I do agree with Mr. Martinez also that we need to watch him.
Mr. Villa, do you have anything?
I agree with Rick. We need to do everything we can to monitor those lakes and maybe these monitoring devices will help us. I know we don't have the staff to be running back and forth, you know.
Okay, if there's uh nothing further from council, we had a motion and a second for uh resolution twenty twenty-three R three. Hearing none from council. Uh, Ms. Bark, could you please call for the vote?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Brian?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Laura?
Yes.
Okay, next up, we have a approval of
I ask a quick question on that. How do we notify the public that that's been done? Other than the newspaper or on the website?
That what's been done with the lift, that the water restrictions have been lifted?
We'll continue with the same process. Uh, Mr. Colander does a great job both with Facebook. Uh, we've, we're utilizing multiple uh groups now. And Facebook will put it on uh the website, we post it on the door.
I just wanted to make sure how we're getting it worked out. Thank you. Sorry.
No problem. Next up, uh, we have a approval for acquisition of reservoir metering devices. Uh, Do we have a motion for this item?
I'll make a motion to approve acquisition of reservoir metering devices.
You have a motion, do we have a second? Uh, that, uh, if you don't mind, including the amount of five thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars uh
Who I was looking for.
It's at the very bottom of the recommendation.
Five thousand five hundred and thirty-five.
Monitoring devices for Dagger and Waha Toya reservoir from in Situ. And the amount of five thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollar, this amount includes eight hundred dollars for the first year of monitoring access. That motion.
I'll add fifty-five, five thousand five hundred and thirty-five, ninety-five dollars for in Situ.
Uh, motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, second by Ms. Laura. In our enclosures, uh, Ms. Davis has provided uh the quote from in Situ, uh, along with her uh recommendations. Uh, Ms. Davis, do you have anything uh in addition uh to uh the importance of uh these items?
No, I think um, as I indicated in the report, even though the state hasn't required that we have these metering devices yet, uh, based upon my discussions with Mr. Perry uh in the process of of monitoring Dagger and Waha Toya. Uh, when we had the discussion about this process and the opportunity to uh obtain this equipment, uh, he was very supportive and encouraging that that would be a huge asset. Uh, we do have the ability to monitor these remotely. We'll have an app where we can get um notification if uh yeah, and establish both the highs and lows. So that if uh we reach a low point, we'll be notified and if it gets to a point that is exceeding the sixteen point five as uh specified by the state, it'll notify us as well. So we're we're confident this will be well on our way to uh doing much better job of managing our systems.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. So
Agreed.
Ms. Mace, do you have any questions or comments? Mr. Martinez?
No.
Uh, one question on the temperature ranges. Um, it's been got, getting really, really cold here and I'm not sure, it just says on the this page. I don't know what page that is. Um, it says that the operational is minus four to a hundred and seventy-six, but I'm more interested in the um cold temperature, so where they, if it says calibrated operational storage, so it only goes to twenty-three degrees above um zero, so they're not gonna freeze up or do anything like that. I mean, the temperature won't matter.
No, the intent of these is to uh so they go literally almost to the bottom of the reservoir at the lowest point. That's their intent to measure everything at that point and above. So the the freeze level of the lake, I'm guessing is probably no more than a foot. So as long as um these devices are well below that, there should not be an issue and and uh they're utilized in multiple reservoirs throughout Colorado.
And it's gonna measure the tops, all right, because that'll give us a level.
It's a, right, it measures everything from top to bottom.
Mr. Jennings, do you have anything, sir?
Just wanna say whatever's gonna help us keep the lake full.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Villa.
I agree with Rick, whatever helps us keep deep right, that's what we gotta do.
Yeah, and uh a- as far as uh efficiency, I think this will really help uh city staff too as far as uh not having to burn the time and gas running back and forth to La Vida to to manually monitor the the reservoirs uh. There's uh nothing further from council. Uh, Ms. Bark, could you please call for the vote?
Except they'll still need to break the ice, won't they, if it freezes up? No, they won't have to do that either.
Because their town board froze it.
Ms. Bark, can you please call for the vote?
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Ms. Laura?
I want
Gates.
Ms. May? Did you say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Brian?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Vera, are you comfortable with us circling back to uh new business item six, approval of election hearing officer?
Yes.
Okay, uh, were you able to determine anything?
Yeah, so I do not believe that there's a conflict of interest with the um consultant serving as the hearing officer. Um, and as she stated, she's impartial. Um, she's acted as a municipalities. Um, it sounds like she was fielding questions from any members that needed guidance in the recall process. Um, I don't believe there's a conflict of interest. Um, if certain council members want to abstain, they can. Um, however, the fact that somebody is being called through this process in and of itself does not create a conflict. Um, you still need to vote at some point to elect a hearing officer. Um, if there's not a form to do that today, we're gonna have to call um a special meeting to do that um if we were today.
Ms. Vera? Um, so uh
What if they have an active protest? Like, what if I have a protest? So are you protesting?
May, excuse me, may I, may I make a comment?
Um, yes, Ms. Goldman, please.
Thank you, all right. Um, let's put the protest aside for the moment. Right now, there will be a recall election and on the ballot will be four questions and the questions will be to recall four of the members of the city council. So that is a fact. I am guessing that the reason the protests were filed were to possibly halt the possibility of having a recall election. In other words, the protests were filed in an attempt to overturn the decision that Mr. Colander made that the petitions were sufficient. Now, if the if the evidence it at the hearing and in the protest is not enough to overturn the election, then what is going to happen is still going to happen. So, I mean, it would, it would seem to me that um not having a a, you know, a hearing officer um, or having the protest at least gives you a fifty-fifty chance of overturning the decision to actually hold the recall. So I just wanna make sure everybody understands what will happen and what the purpose of the protests being filed. And I personally don't see um any conflict um in filing a protest. In fact, in hearings that I've held in the past, the persons who have been the subject of the recall have indeed filed the up a protest arguing why their their um the decision to hold the, to have them recalled should be overturned. So it's nothing new and it happens all the time. And that's really all I have to say at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Uh, Ms. Mace, would you like to finish your thoughts? Okay, uh, I believe we had a uh motion and I apologize, I didn't catch the uh, second by Mr. Be Hill uh for uh approving uh, Ms. Karen Goldman as the election hearing officer.
They didn't have a motion. I thought Nick made the motion, Rick.
Mr. Jennings made the motion, uh, Mr. Be
No, Ms. Mr. Be Hill made the motion and Jennings made the second.
Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Colander. Okay, now that we have that squared away, uh, if there's nothing further from council, uh, Ms. Bark, could you please call for the vote?
Mr. Be Hill?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Brian?
Yes.
We did our job.
Hey, moving on to approval of an election protest hearing date, uh, as uh Ms. Goldman had just informed us uh, that has to be done within five to ten days of notification being uh provided to those involved in the recall, that being uh the officers and then uh the committee members uh that are generating the effort uh with uh that uh, Ms. Goldman uh you don't mind me asking, uh, that five to ten days is uh legally, is that defined as days or does that include weekends as well?
It's calendar days.
Calendar days, thank you. Uh, what is council's pleasure, uh, given uh the calendar that we have to work with here? And you had stated that those notifications would be provided to these individuals tomo- tomorrow, correct? Uh, effectively starting the clock?
That that is correct, and I believe that in um, Ms. Davis has prepared a memo that um identifies two potential dates that really fit it, quite honestly, fit in with my schedule in in the event that you you would appoint me. Um, she may have some comments she will wanna make.
So in my recommendation, uh, council, I had suggested the thirteenth of the fourteenth, once a Monday. The second, the fourteenth is a Tuesday. But one of the, the aspects of this, as Ms. Goldman has pointed out, is that within five days, the hearing officer must uh have a report of finding a fact. Uh, and at which point, once that occurs, then it's up to the council then to determine the second course of action, which if it's to have an election, then that affords you the opportunity to both have the finding of fact and then on the twenty-first, which is your next regularly uh scheduled uh council meeting to be able to uh set the specific date for the hearing. So from a timing standpoint, that affords uh both your protest officer and the council the opportunity to fit things in a calendar uh effectively and efficiently. So the recommendation is either for the thirteenth or the fourteenth. Uh, recommendation is for ten AM and it will occur here in the city council chambers, five two five South Albert Avenue, Walsenburg, Colorado.
Is there a Zoom option for people?
At this point in time, we are, we will record it, but we will not Zoom it.
Oh, I can't. I'm out of town.
Just just for a note, there's a urban renewal meeting on the fourteenth.
The urban renewal meeting is scheduled for six PM start time. Um, and there are currently four protests that will be um heard that particular day or the
On the thirteenth and fourteenth, there won't be one of them because I will not be there.
Um, I'm just saying, it, you know, it's a situation where you may not be able to accommodate everyone. But either day, uh, there are four protests and they can all be heard the same day.
Given the information that uh Ms. Davis has provided and I I feel it makes sense, gi- given the timeline that we have to abide by, uh, does a council member wish to make a motion uh entertaining either uh February thirteenth or February fourteenth at ten AM for a protest hearing?
I'll make a motion that we do it on February fifteenth at ten AM.
I'll second that.
I'm unfortunately not available on the fifteenth.
We had a, well, uh, we have a motion for the fifteenth. Do we have a second so we can decide how to move on? I I apologize.
One second.
I I must
I'll just, I'll just take back my motion.
Okay, uh, uh, well, to 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 keep, keep it easy, uh, we'll go ahead and process it. Uh, uh, Ms. Bark, could you please call for the vote?
Mr. Jennings?
No.
Ms. May?
No.
Mr. Be Hill? Ms. Martinez?
No.
Mayor Brian?
No.
Ms. Laura?
No.
Yes.
Hey, once again, is there a council member willing to entertain a motion for February thirteenth or fourteenth, given the limited availability of Ms. Goldman?
No, because Veronica will be gone.
It's not fair to her.
It's not fair to her.
You guys could go on without me.
May I say something?
On without her, uh, Ms. Goldman, please.
Yeah, um, um, I, you know, I I regret the fact that Ms. May's will not be available on either of those days. However, I have her protest. And I will be using the information, the, some of the information in her protest is mirrored in the protests of other people, so her concerns uh will be considered as part of the protest hearing.
And would I be allowed to send you additional information that I was
Absolutely, absolutely.
Fine with me then, thank you.
Yes, yes. Anybody may do that, so yes, you may.
Okay, with that uh being hopefully somewhat clarified, uh
I'd like to make a motion that we set a hearing date for the protests of the recall petitions on February, oh, but fourteenth.
At ten AM?
At ten AM.
Motion by Ms. Laura, do we have a second? A second by Mr. Martinez, is there any additional discussion before we call for the vote? Hearing none, Ms. Bark, could you please call for the vote?
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Be Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Brian?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay, uh, we've already taken care of our Okay, uh, we've already taken care of our watering restrictions and reservoir metering devices, so we'll go ahead and move on to uh. New business item ten, City of Walsenburg Vehicle Fleet Maintenance Discussion and Council Direction, uh. Y'all may remember, uh, during our last special meeting, Mr. Daniels had uh, raised the. Fat, well-known fact that uh, he has been providing the fleet maintenance services to the city of Walthamburg. And given that. We are now outside of the performance period defined when uh, the prior council had approved. Uh, utilizing his services. Uh, and then uh, Mr. Daniels had uh, asked whether this was something that council even still wanted to uh. Entertain, uh, uh, I felt that uh. It would be vital for council to go ahead and give. Administration direction on whether uh. They desired to continue doing business with Mr. Daniels and try to, even though there's not. A formal contract, uh, try to go that route or uh, release uh, RFP to the public. To see if there are any other vendors in our area that may. Would, might like to uh, submit a bid, uh. Ms. Mays, do you have any thoughts on this topic?
I'm just sad that we're taking this on to address this, but um. I mean, we can put it back out to bid, whatever council chooses to do. Um, I will say that we could also lose the pricing that we have now if we do that, so I don't know. I don't know, but somebody needs, we need to have something in place to take care of our fleet.
Now, Mr. Martinez?
Daniel's towing was substantially the low bidder. When this went out to bid. Uh, they've performed above and beyond since that time. They've had numerous occasions when they. Provided free service for the city for lockouts, tire repairs. Dump starts and whatnot. Uh, they've. Arranged for the city to buy tires from a distributor. Uh, cutting themselves out of the purchase of the tires for substantially lower than. Than uh, we could get them anywhere else. And I would like to see us continue our. Uh, business relationship with that organization, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Ms. Laura, do you have anything?
Well. I'd like to see Mr. Daniels continue because it is. Was approved by Colorado by statute, according to Mr. Hyatt. Um, but at the same time, I feel maybe we need to put it out for an RFP. And Mr. Daniels can resubmit his contract application or, or whatever.
Thank you, Ms. Laura, uh, Mr. Jennings.
Uh, I kinda have the same feeling as Ms. Laura. Uh, you know, the contract's been up already. Uh, maybe we do need to take it back out for bid and see what we get. That, that's my thinking.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings, uh, Mr. Vio.
I agree, maybe we ought to put it out for bid and see what we get.
Thank you, uh, with that being said, now that we've been able to hear from council, would a council member mind, uh. Presenting a motion, uh, directing council to uh, solicit uh, bids from local vendors. For our vehicle fleet maintenance services. Uh, I apologize at this point, uh, it, it opens the fire. Do we have a motion for this item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to direct uh, administration to set out FRP for. Uh, vehicle maintenance. The city of Walsenburg.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Jennings and a second by Mr. Veal. There is no further discussion, uh. Ms. Bark, could you please call for the vote?
Mayor Brian?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
No.
Mr. B Hill?
Yes.
Mays?
No.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Ms. Laura?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you, uh, moving on to new business item eleven, uh, approval of uh, bid for cleaning of the Kohler and Gomez ditches. Uh, we have a motion for this item. For uh, that a minimum motion to discuss.
I'll make a motion to discuss. Bid for clean. As ditches.
Motion by Mr. Vio, do we have a second?
I'll second for discussions.
Uh, second by Mr. Jennings, so uh. Within uh, hearing closures, you will find uh. I apologize, I'm stepping back here. We have received uh, one bid from M and M excavation, uh, Ms. Davis, do you mind giving us a overview on uh? Processing news to uh, solicit these bids and uh, how you went about uh. Uh, defining the expectations with M RFP.
So, part of this, uh, the RFP was developed with uh. Sort of consulting uh, consideration by both. Uh, our water attorney, Ms. Delala, and our water engineer, uh, Mr. Welsh. They both have expressed ongoing concerns with the condition of the ditches and the liability. And uh, state statutes that clearly specify the city's responsibility for maintaining ditches. Um, this particular RFP uh, was sent out and it was advertised with the World Journal. Uh, due to timelines, it was, it was a rather tight window, it was advertised for about ten days. It was also posted on the uh, city's website, as well as advertised. The uh, process officially closed at twelve noon, February third. So that we would have it available uh, for consideration and conversation with the council. You'll notice that, um, we tried to, I tried to be very specific and provide as much information. To uh, interested contractors in terms. The intent of cleaning the ditches, why it was necessary and important for the city. Uh, expectations on what that would look like. And, you know, what it would need to look like after they left. So, they're knowing that most of the properties that these people are going through. Uh, is private property, they would have to coordinate extensively with those individuals, what we don't wanna do is create. More issues for ourselves down the road because of contractors who um, leave. Whether it's sections of pipe or, or piles of trash. Uh, al- along the, the ditch. Uh, the right of way is, is conventionally by most state standards, fifteen feet from center line of ditch. So you have a thirty foot easement. You'll note that most of this uh, does not. Open up an easement capability so that we could go down both sides of the ditch, simply because of the level of overgrowth. And vegetation that's available. In places that open up the ditch to ensure that we have full flow. In some cases, it requires, as identified in the bid. That they hand clean up and clear enough to be able to even get water to come down the ditch, so. Having said that, um. Timeline was uh, extremely important, uh, cleaning and clearing, clearing of the color ditch must be complete by March sixth. Cleaning and clearing of the Gomez ditch must be complete by April first. So, that's clearly identified in the bid process. Uh, and as uh, the mayor pointed out, we had uh, an individual that submitted a bid in timely manner.
Uh, how? See that uh, we have the ditches broken down uh, by linear foot, uh. How's that distance calculated and by who?
Mr. Welsh.
Mr. Welsh, thank you. And uh. You see, a- as far as the, the funding mechanism that you proposed for this, uh. You had mentioned that uh, the Kohler ditch diversion was resolved in another fashion, making those uh, capital improvement funds available, uh. Do you mind informing council and the public as far as how uh, the Kohler ditch diversion that that was originally uh, uh. Dedicated towards uh, was resolved in another fashion?
So our Kohler ditch diversion, if you remember, was, the intent was to um. Build a structure and a, a wet well to where we could. Can take water from the Kohler ditch and then pump it directly back into uh, the city reservoir. In conversations both with Mr. Perry, um, the state dam inspector. Uh, based upon other conversations that we had in regards to Dagger and Wahatoya. And then additional conversations with RJH Consulting, who did the uh, design engineering work on city reservoir. There is already a mechanism in place. And has been for a number of years that was designed specifically for that intent. So, the only thing that uh, we would really probably wanna look at. From a cost standpoint is some clearing there at um. Where the screw gate is at the water treatment plant. Uh, adding some additional uh, concrete in the bottom of that. So that we can maybe control and do a better job of cleaning that area. But there is, that screw valve specifically was designed to control the Kohler ditch. To provide a mechanism for closing that and developing a pool. At which point we could drop a eight inch trash pump in it. And put it into a pipe that's already existing that daylights into the uh, concrete. Um, mechanism in City Lake, so. Having said that, the monies that we had designated and set aside. Back in November and December to use as uh, match for some funding requirements. Uh, is now available because it won't be necessary.
How much was that?
Hundred and fifty eight thousand.
He put a hundred fifty eight thousand per match?
Yes.
And, one concern that I have, uh. Certainly can't deny that our uh, uh, especially the Kohler ditch there is in poor condition in a num- number of areas, but uh. As far as unexpected expenses coming up that are strangely enough related to ditches, uh. I personally think that this funding, since it won't be going to this Kohler ditch diversion. Could go to uh, the unanticipated expense that we have at Wahatoya, as far as that means of conveyance. From our overflow back to Wahatoya Creek.
I agree.
Think that might be a, a, a good use for this and uh, would help us. Sort of pin down some of the issues that we spoke about earlier, as far as getting some additional stakeholder buy-in. On the Gomez ditch as well as uh, uh, any uh, possible uh, resources that. Could be uh, had from uh, Colorado Parks and Wild by for this, uh, that's uh, kinda just, just my thoughts on this, uh. I, I'd hate to uh, go to this uh, expense here to uh, be caught with that uh, mandate from the dam inspector. Uh, and not have the money to address uh, flooding that actually is and has taken place. Ms. Mays, do you have anything?
I just, I don't know, I. I just wish we would have more bits than one, um, especially from a former employee who quit and then we get a bill like this, it's just, I don't know.
To go on the record, ma'am. This is not from the former employee.
His name's on it.
Uh, only as an operator. The owner of the business is uh. Larry Morgan.
He's still gonna get paid, or still relative.
I agree.
What happens if they don't meet this, these deadlines?
They're in breach of contract.
But what does that mean? They don't get paid at all? They get paid a portion?
We haven't negotiated the contract to know, uh, traditionally, if there's a uh, penalty for. Daily penalty based upon that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if none of that's already in this contract, I, I don't see how we can approve that. And um, what was my other question? And what happens, I mean, you know, obviously with these deadlines, if these property owners aren't letting, you know, if it takes some time to get. Allow them on those properties, then what?
So the state of Colorado, um, you don't have to have permission. Um, that's a right of. The ditch uh, owner, which in this case is the city of Walsenburg. Um, you can access regardless. Obviously, you would like to have conversations and inform property owners of, of your intent to do that. But they cannot prohibit you from having access to that ditch for maintenance and uh.
So there's, so there's three different segments on here, three different bits part of this. Why are those amounts so different all over the place?
Because of the condition of the ditches themselves, on a vegetation, the amount of trash. If you're familiar with the Gomez and the Boski. Uh, in addition to vegetation, there's substantial amounts of trash. Residents have deposited there that inhibit the flow of water in the ditch. Um, the Goma, the Kohler, this larger segment of thirteen thousand uh, linear feet of the uh, Kohler ditch. Has more open areas, it's less restrictive. So it affords them the opportunity to not have to have as much personnel or equipment in to do what needs to be done there. The segment from US one sixty through the park is dense. Um, it has a, a lot of um. Um, tamarisk that has grown up, uh, larger trees. That's gonna require substantial amount of, of mulching even to get equipment in there and then handwork.
So what did they base their bid on? Did they walk this?
They, they spent a day walking both segments of the, of ditch.
And none of these areas were cleaned during fire mitigation? When the county was doing all of the fire mitigation, cleaning like along the Chares River, none of that was done that far up?
Now, I will say on the, on that segment one, uh, I was, the landowner had provided uh, some images of that ditch uh, that he had taken uh. A year or so ago, he had sent them over this morning and uh, is very silted in, uh. Uh, looks like it's right off the diversion of the Kachara. Uh, if council were to entertain uh, performing. Any of uh, this cleaning this year, I, I would uh, maybe suggest that portion, given that it has the lowest cost. Per linear foot at four dollars a foot. And uh, as Ms. Davis had alluded to, it's uh, fairly wide open and uh, many areas, there aren't any trees. And if there are trees, I'm like, uh, uh, the large cottonwoods, Russian oles and tamarisk that are found in other portions, uh. It's just uh, pineons and junipers sort of scattered about, uh, not near the uh, of an intense uh, job site, in my opinion. Ms. Laura, did you have anything?
Um, two questions on the RFB that you put out. Sorry, I, I moved everything. Um, it says that the city will retain ten percent, does that mean we pay them up for in full? Except for the ten percent?
No, it's, if they choose to submit uh, invoices for partial payments. Then we retain uh, ten percent of that until the job is completely, is completed and signed off on.
Okay.
It's somewhat standard practice with most contracts.
And I never saw this in the newspaper, and I had mentioned.
What dates was?
This was January twenty six, twenty twenty three.
Okay, cuz I did now see. A water supervisor finally in the newspaper, so what happened with, with the, the uh. Uh, uh, who did you hire to fix the, to repair the broken water lines on an emergency basis?
Based upon your approval, we uh, hired Parker Excavating out of Pueblo.
Okay, and they are not willing to maybe dig ditches, did they get asked?
Um, they were offered the opportunity, that's not their bailiwick. They're pipe guys, not the same kinda contractors.
Well, they still dig holes.
Mr. Jennings, do you have anything, sir?
Uh, I, I kinda agree with you, you know, uh, if they go with the, the segment one. I'm the Kachara, standard oil. Um, and I don't know what uh, we can do with uh, the Gomez where, you know, that one's pretty high at ten forty three. The linear foot. Um. You know, cuz then, like everybody's saying about uh, what we gotta do to dagger, to get that back into. You know, the river, you know, I think. you know, the river, you know, I think the money that we have uh oh up now that we we can probably save that and get that done to satisfy the state in that area. You know, that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr..
I think.
May I ask one last question?
Yes, Ms. Laura, please.
Okay, so if we pay this company to clean segment one and we don't clean segment two, are we going to have a huge rush of water going into segment two that will overflow?
Not not necessarily. The importance of segment one is you want that ditch clean so that you can convey water at least water treatment plant. The significance of that is because of the ability to divert the water from that um uh screw screw gate and into city reservoir. That's the key component. From there, um we'll convey water into Horseshoe as available and Martin. Again, if it's available, that will be the secondary intent. So it's less of a concern for that distance than it would be from the diversion and um the headgate to
So if we ask for segment one to be completed by our deadline uh March sixth?
Yes.
Um then maybe we could consider other options later?
I don't see any reason why you couldn't.
Okay, so I don't know what other members of council are thinking.
No, okay. Uh but on a point that uh Ms. Maze had brought up, uh I I realize that while it might not be uh formally the an ex-city employee that uh had submitted this bid, uh they are an employee and uh relative of the individual uh that had uh are we don't need any specifics, but are there any outstanding claims as far as unpaid wages, unpaid benefits, uh anything like that?
No, sir.
Uh Ms. Maze, did you have any thoughts? Ms. Ma.
I think the numbers are all really high. Uh maybe I'm just out of touch with what construction costs nowadays, but but that's uh it seems really high to me. Uh I believe the most important section is segment one. Uh segment two, even if it does overflow, it's overflowing in the park and it's just going to get to Horseshoe Lake eventually. Uh and the Gomez ditch. I I think we should we need to clean it for sure because we're the ones that end up paying the claims when it floods somebody's house. But we need to try and get some kind of agreement in with the other stakeholders. Uh I've talked to Faldutos in the past about this. And one of their main concerns with the previous agreement that they saw was that the ownership percentages were all wrong. And I don't know if we've changed that, if we've updated any of that or not, but he said everything was, everybody's percentage was wrong compared to what was actually owned. So I don't know, maybe that gives you something to look at, but I I don't know. That's just what what the information I got from him was. Uh but I I guess I don't have that much problem with approving segment one. I wish we'd have had another bid for sure. Just to just to keep everybody honest, but but we need to do something there and if we would have been able to run it last year, like we know we can run it now, we wouldn't have had this big water shortage. So that's my two cents.
And uh I got something.
Oh, yes, yes, sir, Mr. Villa.
We have the dam engineer with the reports of what we need to do in La Vida for Waha Toya and Dagger. I think we need to save that money and try to get that fixed because even if the water comes, if it leaks out, what good is it? You know, we made messes outside of Dagger. We need to clean that all up and get the water back where it's supposed to be. I think that should be our main thing right now.
And I know there's a timeframe, but maybe we send, need to send it out again.
And uh ju- just one thing I I will note too uh uh regarding uh what seems to be a high price, one thing that I took notice of uh I was kind of surprised that there wasn't uh based on equipment hours like uh other ditch cleaning companies offered. Uh I I can understand why they they went this this route, especially given the variation of uh vegetation density in a number of these stretches, but uh uh I agree with uh seems to be the majority of council that uh I think it would be really beneficial to have additional bids to work with and compare and then uh of of course also try to address some of these other issues as far as engaging other stakeholders. As it stands right now, we had a a motion and a second to discuss. We can take no action and postpone. Uh and uh during the right time of the agenda, uh I'd ask uh council if uh they desire to still uh ha- have this work maybe looked at this year, even though we will be losing our window uh uh maybe direct uh administration to uh look into this once we get past this uh critical stage here that we're reaching in March and our need to uh utilize those rights that are uh temporary and limited.
The thing about this is if we miss our window in March, we missed it. That's it. The water goes down the river, we don't get it back. There's no second chance. So we need to either run water on the ditch in the condition it's in, or we need to get that first section clean.
How much more silt? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Martinez.
That's no, that's that's good. Go ahead.
Sorry. So so how different is the amount of silt and all of that compared to what it was last year? Because we were able to recoup that water. Um we didn't get it in March, but we were able to recoup it.
Well, we
Had water in March.
We got water.
I know, I know.
Same, but the but the water that went down the river in March was gone.
Yeah, it was gone.
Right, but we still were able to recoup even though we lost it.
Just some of it.
Most of it is what.
Even though we don't, I mean, even though we don't have multiple bids or even two bids, um it sounds like kind of what I've heard from people who kind of know more, that that first section is really kind of important right now to get that cleaned. And Ms. Davis said that she had a hundred fifty-eight thousand that she was going to use for match. So we say that we'd like just that first piece cleaned at fifty-three thousand or a negotiated price that has a breakout in it. Um and then then look at like what you're saying. I mean, I still think that a couple of those projects can be done and we can still get that.
Might be able to.
I I mean, I don't know, that's an idea of that.
It is a good, they're gonna have a hundred thousand. You know, leftover.
We can't do, not do nothing.
It's stuck again if we do.
And and honestly, uh Ms. Maze, I I I think uh your suggestion is the best of both worlds because while we certainly have have concerns with uh the the bid that's before us, uh the pictures that uh the gentleman had forwarded to me earlier today, I I could see how we could quickly have a a bank exceedance uh it's really more of a depression running across the field than actual ditch things.
I've seen some uh, you know, family members' property as well, and it does need to be cleaned. We need to adjust that.
Given now that.
I'd like to make a motion then that we approve.
Well, do we have to finish this motion that was?
Uh that was uh simply a motion uh to to discuss.
To discuss it.
So uh if a council member would like to uh present a motion uh with other options.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the segment one cleaning.
For fifty-three thousand dollars?
To include the penalties? Uh
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, whatever.
The penalties, insurance and everything else that we're missing.
Right.
Yeah, if we get all that, I'll second it.
Yeah, we got a motion by Mr. Martinez in a second. Is there any additional discussion before we call for the vote?
Uh I think maybe we should put to the diversion from the Pachar River to the Sandoroio in that uh motion.
So there's no confusion there?
Yeah, there's no good idea too.
Don't move.
Let the record reflect uh that uh Mr. Martinez had amended his motion to reflect that diversion from Kachar River to uh Sandoroio at the total cost of fifty-three thousand. If there's a
I see there's two segment ones, sir. I see, huh?
Okay, uh if there's uh nothing further from council, um Ms. Bark, can you please call for the vote?
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Yes. No.
Another time when you, I guess, we'll do it. Yes.
Ms. Maze? No.
No.
So when there's a tie, it's a failure.
Yeah.
Hey then, uh next up on uh new business item twelve, we had approval of employee pay raises uh. Before we get too far into this, Ms. Davis, do you mind uh giving us an overview?
So what you have in front of you is a recommendation for two individuals, both of who uh have taken on some huge responsibilities.
Where is that I didn't get it? And it's not.
Like the last two pages.
Yeah, a- and this was one of those how uh uh the unfortunately uh administration had not emailed out to individual council members that they had modified it in their Google Drive, so uh
I thought we were supposed to have complete passes on credit.
Not on the agenda.
Yeah, it is.
Yes, it's on the agenda.
I mean, it's on the agenda, but not the impersures.
Uh if you're working on a downloaded version of the agenda, then it wouldn't be on there, but if the real time drive version, uh it is.
Thank you.
There you go. Uh I apologize uh. Davis, uh did you have a?
And you So I'm not sure.
Yeah, sorry, we we kind of got sidetracked there.
That's that's okay. Uh apologize, you you know, Friday was a little hectic. Um the proposed pay raises uh were based upon these individuals um efforts and uh job responsibilities that have expanded dramatically in the last six months. One particular individual stepped into a water treatment plant operator position with no uh experience or background. He did it reluctantly and we and I don't want to say I kind of strong-armed him into it. I um you you know, he has he has done, I has taken certainly advantage of every opportunity he's had to learn uh from our uh ORC, Ramey Environmental. He's done a stellar job of cleaning that facility. And um you know, at the time, I will be the first to admit, because I did to about a half a dozen individuals at that water treatment plant, that after being in there, um I was reluctant to say that I'd ever drunk water that came through that plant. Um he has has gone above and beyond getting that plant in shape. And I think everyone here can certainly attest to the fact that their water no longer smells like dead fish. Uh so he was hugely responsible for that along with sir uh with Ramey Environmental and their staff. Uh the second individual also has taken on huge responsibilities. We've talked about uh the cross connection program that's required by the state. Um he's also a primary ERT uh meter meter reader has uh balanced all of those responsibilities and tasks in with this new cross connection program. And is uh agreed to uh go through training and afford us the opportunity to actually have a certified cross connection inspector, surveyor and potentially a tester in the near future, so.
So what are the proposed raises?
My recommendation is the one individual goes from eighteen dollars an hour to nineteen dollars an hour, which is still well within the uh bounds of the water operator treatment uh water treatment operator position. And the other goes from fifteen fifty to sixteen dollars an hour.
And uh Ms. Davis, uh how you describe uh Mr. Trout looking at taking his entry level uh uh OCTO certification coming up here soon and Mr. Novak looking at getting his cross control uh certification. What would you anticipate? Basically, I'm looking at it, if if these gentlemen are on the cusp of uh taking these tests, uh we're really in a position where we're likely to be right back here, uh assuming they successfully uh pass these tests uh and worthy of another merit raise, what would that look like, say, if uh Mr. Trout were to get his uh D water treatment license?
So that the Mr. Trout is also uh registered for the apprentice program, which has a two-year uh process. A D license he can take now, but it will be two years prior to uh his ability to take his C license. Uh at both he and Mr. Novak would have an annual probably within, I'm not sure the exact dates, probably sometime later this summer. At which point we could, we would have be in a position to review where they are with their training.
So these are in addition to an annual raise? These are like a
Neither of these gentlemen were eligible for annuals. This is uh this is reflective of a probationary period.
Thank you.
So
Eh but the there there is that anticipation though with these uh gentlemen uh successfully completing uh be it the cross connection or uh water operator that they would then be eligible for another merit raise, or you're you're saying that they would have to wait until the annual review? Because I I personally think uh upon completion, uh suc- successful completion of that test, they should be eligible for another merit raise uh just for how often we get our our folks sniped by other community once they get licenses.
Well, it it's fortunate that their annual is probably going to coincide with their ability to complete the testing in the in the uh so we're kind of playing some things by here. Mr. Novak uh is anticipating a May training program um in Pueblo and um Mr. Trout is entering the apprentice program and is anticipating probably for the next thirty to sixty days for his uh D license testing, so.
Like to commend them for both taking the initiative, uh both being able to develop our water operators in-house is key. If you try to secure the services uh I I say we have to build up our water operators in-house because if you try to secure the services of an A licensed operator just off the street, unfortunately, uh they're going to be expecting more money than we we pay our administrators, so bringing those folks up in-house and then uh with the cross control uh issues that we're thankfully finally getting serious on and addressing, uh that'll be another huge savings rather than having uh to use a Dutchman uh as we had this previous year. Uh Ms. Maze, did you have anything?
No, I'll make a motion that we prove these two raises.
Uh what what's processes? We have a motion by Ms. Maze and a second by uh Mr. Martinez. Uh Ms. Laura, you had some uh
Um and I appreciate that that these two employees um have really been pulling their weight. But my question goes back to what happened to the other employees that didn't get their merit raises at the end of the year. I I thought we had said, we had make a made a motion that everything is dependent on merit raises. There isn't an annual raise. It's dependent on merit raises at the end of the year.
I thought it was merit on your anniversary, merit annually. Is what we had decided like thus then was here. Well, I think we need to figure that out. I don't know, but this, I think
This is a probation.
Topic here, we were talking about these two people and
No, this is a probation.
Right, but I mean, I'm still, you know, we haven't heard anything about all the other employees.
Well, this is uh what Ms. Davis said, this is uh they're coming out of their probation period.
I know.
So All the other employees are all at this point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh Mr. Jennings, did you have anything?
Uh so I I'd like to see this coming from me with them uh passing their certifications, you know? But uh since it's a probationary period is expired, you know, I I don't have a problem with this.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Mr. Villa?
I'm good with it.
All righty, we had a motion by Ms. Maze and a second to Martinez. If there's no further discussion, uh Ms. Bark, can you please call for the vote?
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Villa?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Ms. Maze? Mayor Bryant?
Yes, sir. Hey, moving on to mayor and council comments, directions, actions and reports. Uh Mr. Villa, do you have anything for this evening?
Not right at the moment, but I'll think about it.
Sir, uh Mr. Jennings?
Uh I would just like to entertain a motion for uh administration. Uh, administration to uh. Maybe to look into more uh, bids or RFPs for cleaning our ditch. And, and or maybe. Uh, talking to Eminem. And seeing what type of uh. If there's something we can come together with on the price to do that segment one and maybe bring that back to council. Because we do need to get our ditches cleaned. Before we have problems when we start. Pulling water.
Um, both them by Mr. Jennings, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Mr. Villa, is uh, there any discussion to be had amongst council, Ms. Maze?
Uh, my concern is that if we did approve that last piece where we just did the piece, but they may not want that, so I think that I agree that it needs to go out specifically, maybe just for that section. And, you know, more advertisement, more. Or, yeah, and just, you know, really narrow it down to that one area and maybe we'll get more, so I definitely agree with that.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Martinez.
All right, I see.
That's all. Uh, Mr. Villa?
I'm good with it.
If I might for clarification?
Yes, please.
You realize that your next council meeting is the twenty-first? And that from an advertising bid standpoint, you've now compressed that process down to less than two and a half weeks. If you're going to hold to a March sixth timeline.
A- and honestly, I don't think uh, March sixth, even if work were to start tomorrow is uh, the, the most realistic, I, I think uh, given that this is a limited window in which we can pull this water, uh. This uh, might be work that would be better performed uh, later in the season or even as far out, uh. As a next uh, winter. Or, or fall, early winter, uh, that's kinda my thoughts on this, uh, I, I, I really don't have the intent, it's not my intention, uh. To have uh, somebody uh, be able to turn around and get this done by the time we need to pull water, uh, speaking for myself.
And we probably should have addressed this a while back, not, not now. Kinda late in the game. Hurry up and try and get it accomplished.
But uh, we had a motion and a second and uh, just so we're clear, uh, Mr. Jennings, uh. Your thoughts weren't necessarily to have a. Uh, a bid turned around and with advertising and then work done by March sixth, mainly just to keep this on the burner, correct, sir?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we do need to. Get our ditches cleaned. Um, now that uh. You know, we're gonna pull water, you know, we're gonna end up having to. You know, watch these ditches for overflows. You know, so we don't damage anybody's uh, structures. Or anything, so you know, that's gonna put more work on our uh, employees. And.
A- and wh- while, while we're on the topic of discussion there too, with, with some of the, the, the more critical areas, uh. I have to imagine that we do have. Staff in-house that's capable of operating the Mini X, the, the same piece of equipment that Monty had utilized to clean those ditches last year. Or even a backhoe, some of these more critical areas just to keep uh, uh. Baking, bank exceedance down and things like that, could we not, i- if they're available and, and if anything to uh. One sidebar conversation that we had, given that we do somewhat have a, of a underdeveloped workforce as far as uh, it relates to training and expertise, uh. I'm not saying that we would wanna throw a rookie out on a ditch and tell him to clean it, but that's a hell of a proving ground.
That's a good place to learn.
Yeah, y- you know, there, there's only so much.
A- and what if you put out three separate RFPs for each one, and if you get three different contractors, who says they can't all do them at one time?
But.
And maybe they'll get two of the bids.
But like Ms. Davis says, the time crunch between now and when we have to have a job done.
I know.
You know.
Uh, there's nothing further from council though, uh. We had a motion and a second to uh, seek additional bids as uh. A- as we can, uh. Ms. Park, can you please call for the vote?
Ms. Maze?
Yes.
Ms. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Villa?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Park, um, did you have anything else, Mr. Jennings? Uh, Ms. Laura, do you have anything for us this evening?
Nothing tonight.
Uh, one thing that uh, Ms. Maze had brought to my attention, uh, at the beginning of the meeting and uh. Uh, my apologies in, in advance to uh, Ms. Oliver with uh, South Central Council of Government. But uh, she had sent out a questionnaire or survey on uh, February first. Uh, for elected officials to respond if they were so inclined, uh. I, uh, to be honest with you, I have neglected in responding to Ms. Oliver's uh, uh. Uh, message that she had sent on the first, uh, sorry, l- losing track of the word I was. But uh, uh, if uh, council has time though, uh, that would really go a long way in helping uh, COG plan for uh. The future of uh, our citizens and what benefits they could provide, uh, Mr. Martinez, do you have anything to?
I don't have anything.
Uh, Ms. Maze?
Thank you for um, bringing that, she asked if we could just bring that to everybody's attention, um, we're trying to do a strategic plan for the two county area. And it's really vital that everybody has a voice in this, so that's why she sent it to all of us and she's on it as well. And um, I don't really have anything else. Hopefully we'll be building a senior center here soon.
Oh, great, uh. There's nothing further from council, with the good of the order, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, motion by Mr. V Hill and uh, second by Ms. Laura, all in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.
It's actually not too bad.
This is amazing.
Like eleven, the way I drive. That's a positive, do council want me in person from us there?